This is the regular meeting of the Sanford City Council. It is Tuesday, May 18th. It is a little after six. This meeting will be conducted by a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA 403A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-992-056-099 using meeting ID 82861568765 and password 800139 or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email City Departments, City Council. We'll begin the meeting with our pledge of allegiance and Counselor Stackpole will be leading that this evening. So would everyone else please mute your computers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we're having a moment of silence also. So please join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Have the roll call. Counselor Martell. Counselor Hanselman will be along shortly. Counselor Tuttle is absent with notice. Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Counselor Lanigan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I am Anne Marie Mastrochio. I served as the mayor of the city of Sanford. We're joined this evening by the city manager Steve Buck and Larissa Ricketts, the city managers, managers and executive assistants. First item on the agenda for this evening is 21-250-01, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
There is a motion by Counselor Stackpole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Martell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman, I see you're there.
Yes, and yes, thank you.
Counselor Tuttle absent. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yeah.
And I am also, yes, that is six in favor, one absent. 21-251-01, order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Second by Counselor Martell, I think. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle absent. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yeah.
And I am also, yes, that is six in favor, zero opposed and one absent. Mayor's report, city council subcommittee reports. I really don't have much this evening, except I just wanted to, for those who are looking for it on the agenda, the rules of procedure didn't complete the legal review, so we'll be doing that at the next regular meeting. That's all I have this evening. Is there anything else from any subcommittees that aren't going to be on the agenda, that aren't already on this agenda? Counselor Stackpole has his hand up.
Yeah, well, zoning, I just want to make as part of the record, zoning did meet last week, last Tuesday. The major focus was on, again, pursuing the regulations or ordinances around recreational marijuana. One thing that we determined that was notable is that this, we don't seem to have enough time to spend on that particular topic, and so we've decided to carve out some time for that topic. I believe there was agreement that we would commit to the first half, at least, of subcommittee meeting to working on medical marijuana piece. And Solid Waste Committee also did meet last Tuesday, and I apologize, but I can't remember the topic at that meeting. Steve, can you help me?
Hey. What's your phone?
Litter.
Litter, that's correct. Thank you, thank you, Luke. We had a lively discussion around litter in the city, citywide, and Counselor Hanselman was actually leading the discussion on this. Counselor Hanselman is not a member of the Solid Waste Subcommittee, so this was something she was pursuing just as a counselor and a citizen. And I believe we came up with some good recommendations to focus on the litter problem that we have in the city. And one thing I think we were going to mention, so I'll just mention it, is that we talked about litter blowing around the city that, as a result of recyclables being put out, and our discussion focused around there will be some days, as there have been in the recent past, when recycles probably shouldn't be put out that week. That does mean you'll miss a week of recycles picked up, which can be an issue, but otherwise it can become a problem in various neighborhoods around the city that recycle bins tip over. There's a mention that somebody saw a whole recycle bin full of recyclables blowing across a side street, not being tipped over, but just blowing horizontally across the street. So we would ask, as a starting point in all this, that people consider whether or not it's appropriate to put their recycles out for the day. And of course, nobody's going to come knocking on your door saying you shouldn't put your recycles out, but if it's extremely windy, then our suggestion is that you consider not putting your recycles out that week and hold them for the next week. So that was one of the major concessions. And I don't know, Counselor Hanselman, do you want to speak to some of the thoughts that you had on this? Because I think it's appropriate to at least get those irons in the fire.
Yeah, no, there was some great conversation, thank you, Counselor Stackpole, on the idea of maybe some semi-annual community cleanup days and the concept of possibly, you know, adopt a cleanup area type concept. And so I'm working on putting together a kind of full package, which would include some marketing info and some procedures for engaging in community members to help make that happen. So I'm going to present that the next, if time allows, the next Solid Waste Subcommittee meeting. So I'm super excited.
Thanks. That's it for me.
Thanks, and I just want to give you all a heads up. For some reason, I got kicked off. I've never had problems with my internet, but everything just froze and I lost and I had to go off. So if that happens again, Deputy Mayor Hurley, just keep an eye out. If you see me disappear, get a heads up from Larissa. Means you have to stay attentive. You're muted. Counselor Hurley, you're muted.
Anne Marie, do you use your cell phone for your audio? Or do you try to use both?
No, no, I have never had a problem. It's just that, for some reason, this time of day, in the last few days in my area, I've noticed that there might be a point where the internet goes a little. I'm just warning you, because I know we're going to be in the middle of hearings, so I'm just giving you a heads up. I don't anticipate that it'll happen again. I don't have kids in the house using the internet, trying to, you know, play movies and do all that stuff, luckily. So, all right, so that is, oh, city managers report. You're next, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Starting off this evening, information about COVID-19 vaccination updates. Pfizer's been approved for 12 to 15-year-olds, and I have some further information on that. Shipments for next week's for vaccination, 21,000 plus on Pfizer, 15,400 on Moderna. No doses coming in for Johnson &amp; Johnson. It seems to be sufficient inventory currently of J&amp;J vaccination out there for all centers, so no, none were ordered for the coming week. In here is vaccination informations on where we stand here in York County. York Hospital's done 24,269 in the York Clinic. Sanford Mega Center has done 33,811. The incident management team, using our paramedics here in York County, has done 4,467. And the FEMA ban that has gone from various communities, done 2,277. School clinics to date has done 289, and I have further information on that. Stats that we currently look at as far as hospitalization, 110 in the hospital, 42 in ICU, 68 in non-ICU, 19 on ventilators, been a relatively stagnant number, although this is down from 132 in the last reporting period. There's information, there's going to be an informational meeting tomorrow night in the current to the public that has not been vaccinated yet, that wants further information to attend this. There's a Zoom and as well as a Facebook Live session that's being put on by Southern Maine Healthcare. There are at least four physicians that will be there to answer questions from the public around vaccinations and to address the hesitancies that they might have. So again, the link is provided here with the ID number, as well as the time, again, is tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. Also, Maine providers may immediately vaccinate youth 12 to 15, and so I've given you the information on here of note in here. I have that later in the report. I asked today during the IMT meeting with York County what they're seeing in the school vaccination clinics, and to date, they're seeing about a 20% response. So about 20% of the student population that is eligible for vaccinations is responding and has received it here today. We previously had requested via the York County IMT meetings that the state provide a link and access to the ZIP code information, and I have that information here for you tonight. I've included the link here, although you can find it by going to the main CDC, click on the main dashboard information, and then you can access it there. It's a new highlighted banner, very easy to find. Looking at that data as of yesterday, it indicates that for our ZIP code, 04073, and I'll show you the color code in a minute, where 60% or greater of our residents have been vaccinated, but there's still greater than 2,000 residents left to be vaccinated. I'm not sure why they include that last piece of information, but they do. The Springvale ZIP code of 04083 is at 61%. I did note that as of last Friday, when I looked at this data set, we were below the 60%, and by Monday, we were above the 60%. So good progress, just even over the weekend. I'm hoping the number continues to climb. Looking at how we compare in the color coding here, let me scroll down for just a moment. Here's the color coding. You can see that Sanford and Springvale here in the southerly tip, we are at one of the better categories. We're greater than 60% of our residents vaccinated, but we still have greater than or equal to 2,000 residents remaining unvaccinated. The only piece of information on here better than that is the green, there'd be a greater than 60% and have less than 2,000 residents remaining to be unvaccinated. So previously, we were concerned about, you know, is Sanford and/or Springvale behind the curve? We seemingly are on top of the curve and doing very well.
So Steve, can I point out, I saw this last week, and one of the great things about the way they did this is it really points out the rural communities or rural towns with very few residents, and those with a lot of residents. It really makes a nice distinction by color coding in four categories instead of just two.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
I highlighted down here, just so you can see the further detail, obviously, this is Sanford, the 04073, and then the Springvale ZIP code represented up here.
I thought we were just at 50% when I first found this last week, 50-51.
Well, when I viewed it on Friday, we were less than 60%, and by Monday morning, we were better than 60%.
Excellent, okay, wonderful, thank you.
The previously indicated demand for vaccinations has dropped off over the last two weeks, and it dropped off again last week. Sanford Center reduced its hours, but they have added Tuesdays and Thursdays evenings from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. They're open half-days, otherwise, except on Tuesdays and Thursdays, again, the extended hours. You can continue to make a vaccination appointment, as you have been able to in the past, but they are also accepting walk-ins. There's no longer the concern about opening a vial and having to throw away one shot or two shots at the end of a day. That's, CDC has expressed there is no shortage of vaccination at this point in time, so crack another vial if there's only one shot, you have to discard it, discard it. The important thing is to get the shot into the arm of the person asking to be vaccinated.
Steve, may I mention just briefly, vaccination info? I'm actually late because of I did a walk-in for my second vaccine. I just want to mention for folks that for any reason, if you missed your first vaccine, you can walk in for your second one. So I just want to mention that. I think that's important, and it's really hard to get through to people on the phone, so.
Okay. The Sanford EMS, our fire and paramedic staff did a clinic two weeks ago in Kittery. It's scheduled for 370, yet only 85 showed up for their appointments, which is the disappointment part. Last week, they did North Burwick with a newly verified schedule of 260 of the 500-shot capacity that they had for that particular clinic. There are two more clinics they're scheduled to do as far as first-time shots. This week is in Wells, 35 of the 135 had responded, that they're still coming to that particular clinic. And next week in Acton, there was less than, that should be 35, not three, less than 35 confirmed. They're doing two more follow-up clinics. They did a vaccination clinic at Pratt &amp; Whitney, they're going back there next week to do the secondary shots, and they're doing the secondary shots for Corning the week after that. And that will end our known clinics at this point in time, unless there's a decision made at the county level to further stand up the IMT team as far as these remote clinics are State vaccination information is in here, 56, almost 57% first dose and almost 54% second dose. I put the York County vaccination rates in here. We finally have caught up on the first dose, and we're getting there on the second dose. So good progress here as far as York County is concerned, in comparison to the state's overall average. Won't go through all of this information, but the overall vaccination by county, so you can look in here, particular counties. Again, Cumberland County is out there in front as far as overall vaccination and secondary vaccination rates. I'll leave you with that, and there's the distribution of the various vaccines that have been administered.
Did you notice when you looked at the numbers that it showed York at like 100% vaccinated? I clicked around a bit.
Show who?
York, Maine, not the county, the city, oh, town.
Okay. Good for them.
I clicked around in different ZIP codes when I was playing with the ZIP code vaccination rate, and I clicked on like a bunch of towns in York County, and York showed up as 100% vaccinated.
And maybe if we have, I think that it's an interesting thing, but they know that they're going to be inundated with tourists, so maybe people understand that that's a good protection for themselves, working in the tourist industry, just having contact in their community. I'm happy that we're at 60% or 61%. I'm encouraged that we will get there. So, thank you, Steve, for that information.
I think last Saturday, they did 837 at the Mega Center in Sanford, so still good client flow there. All right, here starts the confusion. So Governor Mills issued a statement on the 13th, and then again on the 14th, the two of which were, there's major differences in there. We've been getting a lot of calls, seeking clarification as far as this order. I was given to understand today during the IMT team meeting, the two CDC representatives that were there, that they expect the governor to issue a further executive order this week, providing more clarification to the changes in. So pursuant to the new and updated Moving Maine Forward, and I've given you a link that I found that I think is the best link to go to to find these daily updates now. Effective on the 24th, they're lifting all capacity limits and requirements to physically distance in all public outdoor settings, as well as indoor venues. This was where the confusion starts. Does lift all capacity limits in public indoor venues. Physical distancing requirements are also eliminated, except in settings where people are eating or drinking, and therefore would be removing their face coverings, such as indoor restaurants, bars, dining areas, in camps or in congregate living facilities and break rooms. My confusion is, the confusion that I'm seeing that a lot of other people are listening is, Maine has adopted the federal CDC, which has removed masking requirements for vaccinated people indoors, unless stated further in state or local ordinance, state law or local ordinance. I can find conflicting areas within the information that we've gleaned through as far as what that actually is. Thus, an updated executive order is anticipated for later this week. So it says face coverings must still be worn in public indoor settings. The Maine Department of Health and Human Services and Maine Department of Education will separately update school-based protocols. This is previously, so they have updated that capacity. Here's the link that I'll send everybody. Here's the link we find as being the most useful in there. I believe I have that link up and going here. This is what the document looks like, a very good document. This is the frequently asked questions. All of the areas highlighted in yellow and/or gray are the areas that have been updated since its last issuance. So you can go through there, look at the masking elements, page five and six, indoor, outdoor and the likes. So it's very good information in there. I find conflicting information in there as well. All right, so moving on from COVID, Westside Village Road Projects and Summer Construction. The summer construction work has been placed out to bid. All bids are higher than original estimates. Department of Public Works has been working with the bidders to negotiate the final pricing on many aspects of this summer's program, streets and road improvements. Major project of the Westside Village is to include Shaw Street, Kimball Street, Prescott Street, and a portion of Twombly, remains far in excess of engineered estimates. We are looking at phasing, rebid, breaking the projects into smaller projects to bid to smaller vendors, shifting annualized resources and other options are being explored to ensure that the work is completed on time, meaning this construction season. I'll report back out to the city council with our findings. We're still in negotiation with the bidders on this, seeing if through value engineering and/or economies of scale, we can capture the type of budget cost reduction necessary to bring this back in alignment with our multi-year budget and use of resources. Looking at state budget amendments and pending approvals, the state passed the biennial budget on the 31st of March this year. In there, they had municipal revenue sharing at 3.75% based upon the revenue forecasting committee's, at that time, the 326 projections. Resulting forecast revenues currently utilized in our fiscal '21-'22 municipal budget. On May 7th of this year, the Revenue Forecasting Committee again projected new and very favorable projections for the state, which accounted for an increase of $461 million. The new revenue sharing numbers were then projected by the committee based upon the accepted biennial budget of 3.75%. The governor submitted on the 31st, approved a budget calling for revenue sharing to increase from 3.75% to 4.5%. That's the governor's budget amendments as has been submitted to the legislature. And I still believe that there still is bipartisan support, because I saw more information come through that again today, to move it to 5%. So I put together a chart down below here. We're currently carrying just a $2.5 million revenue sharing, based upon the $461 million of increased performance at the 3.5%. It would take us to $2.8 million, or an increase of nearly $400,000, $395,000. You take that same reprojection and transfer that to 4.5% versus the 3.75, it's an increase of $954,000. If it moves to 5% based upon that increased performance, it's an increase of $1.3 million. Therefore, the council is holding, pending the legislative action that will define what this reality is for us as a municipality as it pertains to revenue sharing.
Counselor Lanigan, you have your hand up, a question about this?
Yeah, just real quick, so is that why we're kind of holding off on the vote on the budget with the Chamber of Commerce? Because obviously, we'd have the extra funds with this here.
We're holding off on the whole budget till we know what the legislature actually does, and I don't think it will be done until the middle of June, if we're lucky.
All right, cool.
All right, further information that's quiets me here right now is coordination of the American Recovery Plan Funds and Maine Jobs and Recovery Plan Funds. So as of May 12th, both federal and state offices have released guidance on the use of the American Recovery Act funds, states, counties and municipalities. We've been collecting resources, we've got guidance from multiple resources in here. The MF GOA, the finance group from here in the state of Maine, I think, has provided be the most concise and clear guidance on there, so we'll be bringing that forward. But we're seeking to coordinate the cities pending $2.12 million of resources with the state's $1.13 billion worth of resources. Feel it's imperative to, for the best use, and not to overlap with other available resources stemming from the state's use and distribution of the ARP funds, and I'll include the county level in there as well. As well, so we're looking at the Mills administration's plans as far as the state plan for the use of the $1.3 billion. I've given you an accounting in here that I'm not going to go through tonight, but there's the immediate economic recovery of $260 million. It's a long-term economic growth at $305 million. There's elements that you can see in here. Expanding strength in Maine's workforce, regulatory reform, increasing licensing efficiency, that won't trickle down to us, I don't believe. Build out family infrastructure, a multitude of elements in here. Transportation improvements, outdoor recreation and marine resources, central drinking water projects, facilitate energy needs, as well as modernizing the state's technology. And the city is going to hold back $20 million to cover administrative and successful deployment of these funds.
Steve, last question on this. Let me, wait one second, Steve. Counselor Hurley, Deputy Mayor Hurley, you have your hand up?
It's a quick question. You know how some of the other communities have gotten direct CDVG money? Is there money going, a huge increase in the state allocation of CDVG as well that we'll be able to put in applications for? Is that how it can be used or no?
That I have not seen that in any of this categorization as of yet, not funneling it into the CDVG. I think this is going to be more direct distribution pursuant to these categories that we see here. That's why I want to, administratively, to go through all of these categories, so that we're not spending our, and I'll say limited resources, where we could have tapped into funds that are going to be distributed down from the state or county level. I would like to make those investments utilizing the localized resources in those other areas. The next element I'd like to present is Public Works and Police Department Partnership for Speed Enforcement. This was before the Public Safety Committee last week. It is a program whereby the Public Works Department will deploy a dynamic speed sign to monitor, educate by display and capture data on motor vehicular movements along certain streets, i.e. speeding. Following a period of display and educate, Police Department will then go in for an enforcement provisions and any subsequent traffic violations to speeding, and then move to another targeted area. Deputy Chief Anderson reports on the implementation of the program, that he's found the following funding opportunities to assist as a tier-one community city is eligible to apply for and receive 80% reimbursement. Speed enforcement for this particular program design, the remaining 20% of the special duty assignments to be paid for out of our overtime budget. So we've applied for 192 hours of targeted traffic control pursuant to that funding opportunity. Also applied for a second initiative discussed at the Public Safety, dedicated for infant feet installation and inspection services to be offered by the Police Department. Department is going for training here in the first part of June, and then we'll be able to offer dedicated clinics for the installation of child seats, as well as do interim inspections on persons' installations. Also identified to make an application, again, for another 192 hours of special duty assignments for distracted driving enforcement. Those applications will be put forth by May 24th. Those applications will be put forth by May 24th. And we anticipate the award and access to the funds no later than June 1st of this year. Wanted to put an element in here about labor. I noticed on a conference with the York County Town and City Managers, last Friday, there were 12 towns and or cities represented on there in that phone call. Of those 12 towns and cities, six of those towns and or cities were represented by either an interim manager or a manager that will retire in the next 30 to 45 days, planning for a 50% vacancy. This is not abnormal here in the southern tip of Maine. We're seeing similar vacancies in dispatch, police, as well as public works. All municipalities are struggling immensely to fill vacancies in those particular areas. Then the last element here is the Sanford High School Design Awards. I know one of these has been accepted and one is pending. I would offer to the general public that the high school, the design has already been awarded an American Institute of Architects Design Award in New Hampshire. I would invite you to look at these videos in here, this YouTube video for that submission put forward by the Valley Brenzinger on behalf of our high school construction. Ever want to have a sense of pride of something that was done and done well, you need to watch this video. It's an incredible video, incredible representation of what a community can do as it pertains to designing an academic and career technical education curriculum, designing the building around it, getting that approved by the state, being able to accomplish that vision. It's an incredible video to watch, so I would invite many people as possible to watch that video going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. I am particularly proud of that high school because I think I was on the school board along with Council Stackpole when we were in the beginning project of discussing the need for a school in the 1990s. So it wasn't easy and it does, it made me really, really, I was proud the day we dug dirt the first time. But honestly, the fact that it could actually get an award, it makes you feel like you really did something. So congratulations to us all as a community because it took every single one of us. Any other questions? Oh, I see Council Hanselman's hand up.
I just can't not mention the amazing work that our superintendents, you know, too, at this point, have put into working on that project as well as the building committee for that project and ongoing projects. But just a shout out to that school department for the amazing amount of time and energy that's gone into it. And it's certainly a point of pride here in Sanford, so.
Thank you, yes, you're absolutely right. They have, they have really done a lot of work to get us where we are and it is appreciated. Okay, is there any other questions for the city manager regarding his report? Seeing none, communications and presentations, there are none. We will go on to public participation and if we could not share the screen, please, Steve, and that way I'll be able to see everybody's hands up. Screen. Public participation, if there's anybody here who wishes to speak on items that are not on the agenda, you would need to raise your hand now. We would need to be able to see you on video and hear you after I recognize you. And you would need to state who you are and where you are from, what were your residents? So I don't see any hands up. I see, oh, I see a hand, I see a wave. Okay, see two waves from Kristen Collins. I don't see anyone else, so I will recognize Kristen Collins. Who is yours? You have five minutes.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I clapped instead of raising my hand, but.
I recognize it exactly the same way.
A hand to hand. I'm Kristen Collins. I'm an attorney at Pready Flaherty, practicing in Augusta in Portland, and I live in Brunswick. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I want to direct the council's attention to a letter and a compilation of other letters that I submitted by email today, right around noon. Hopefully you've received that. I'm serving as sort of an unofficial spokesperson for this group of eight businesses who have each submitted letters. There are others who have joined with them. And this is sort of an unprecedented thing in my career where businesses have come together to hopefully try to solve administrative problems that they're seeing. And first and foremost, right now, they just want to make the council and manager aware of the problems that they've been facing and trying to get applications through the planning process here in Sanford. The common threads are outlined in that letter. And I urge you to read all the letters carefully and see the common threads that you find in them as well. But most importantly for the council's concerns should be the fact that it is taking applicants, sometimes two years, to get planning applications through the process here. And it's costing them up to 20 times more what these businesses are paying in similar communities to get similar types of applications through, $100,000 and up. And, you know, that is driven in large part by an attitude in the planning department which seems to be more obstructionist than helpful, seems to not necessarily be based on ordinances. It's driven in part by ordinances that are amended all too frequently. I know as an attorney trying to get people through this process here in the city, I've found it very difficult to even find what version of the ordinance applies, much less to, you know, make sure that the comments that are being made on an application actually follow the ordinance. People are seeing delays, difficulty in communication, what appears to be deliberate attempts to drum up opposition to certain projects in a way that's not really standard or required by the ordinance. Planning staff sort of refusing to accept information that's been provided by experts and instead coming up with their own sort of theories and not backing them up with the city's own hired experts. And all of that really does amount to a lot of extra work and a lot of extra expense on the part of applicants. And it's just not a friendly environment to get something through. And what it's doing is discouraging businesses from locating and expanding in the city. And so this group of businesses is coming together to jointly ask that the council oversee some sort of an investigation into what's going on in planning, figure out how to get to the bottom of it and make real change so that they can be more encouraged to keep doing business in the city. And they all would like the opportunity to speak more directly to the council about what they've experienced. And so if that means that the council maybe does a workshop to invite people in to talk to them, or schedules individual meetings, or appoints maybe a subcommittee of you to do the same, that would be seen as a really positive step forward to this group and to others who are talking to. So that's all I wanted to say. Again, I do direct your attention to those letters. And I'd ask that the council, obviously you wouldn't be doing anything tonight, but take this up at a future meeting and determine what the best and most legal option is to get through this and figure out how to make real. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. We are here, our job is to listen under public, so we will take those comments under advisement. There is no action or discussion by the council, I'm sure you understand that. But thank you for appearing before us tonight. Are there any other people from the public who wish to address the council? I'm having trouble, Steve, with the screen. Wait, we have full screen, okay.
Madam Mayor?
I can't see any hands up. Our year, is your hand up?
Diane Connolly. I'm having problems with the internet tonight. I apologize. May I speak?
Sure.
She's on the phone.
Diane, is it under, is it an item that is not on the agenda for this evening?
I believe it is not on the agenda. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
Go ahead, you may speak.
I'd just like to make a comment about this past Saturday's event in Springville with the brush fire. I would like to know if, if possible, if there's investigation going on and will the landowners that were around that fire be notified what the investigation results will be? Thank you.
Alright, thanks Diane. We'll have to get back to you on that. That's okay, because it's, but I'm sure that they took some notes and somebody will get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Steve, are there any other, Alyssa, can you see anybody else? For some reason I have just side view and I can't get, even though I have full screen, it says I'm on, I'm not.
I don't.
Okay, now I am, okay, I'm all set, thank you. I don't see any other hands up, does anyone? Okay, then I will conclude public participation, public hearings. The city council will take public comment on the following. 21-226-01, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by C N M Farms for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at 27 Hancock Lane, Building 4, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? I'm assuming someone will be speaking from, who's going to do this, Steve? Is it going to be Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, we're only here, Jamie, I see you, go ahead.
Proceed with approval. We did the inspection, this one is good to go. It's the next one that has a concern.
Okey dokey, so there's no one to speak other than an approval and anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. 21-240-01, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Pine Coast Farms for a medical marijuana manufacturer tier-one license, 12 Smata Drive, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor?
This is Jamie Cole, Code Enforcement Officer. So yes, this applicant is actually requested to withdraw this license request. After they submitted the license application and we did occupancy inspection, they have decided not to locate in this location. So this license is being withdrawn and I request it not to be issued.
Excellent, so we'll just have to take that out of the consent agenda going forward and make sure that we don't approve it. Gotcha, thank you. Anybody else to speak then? I guess there's no need since they're withdrawing it. I'll declare the public hearing closed. 21-222-01, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I almost skipped Matt, sorry. 21-228-01, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the 2021-2022 school budget as proposed by the Budget Committee and approved by the City Council. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor? Superintendent Nelson, you've been waiting very patiently.
Yes, I would like to speak in favor of the budget. Steve, do you have screen share for me?
I do.
Okay, real quick, thank you, Mr. Arquillo and City Council for allowing me to come and speak. I want to give a quick overview of the budget process. This is something that starts for us way back in the fall. If everyone can go back in time, remember at that time, there were a lot of funding concerns, especially coming from state revenue and the projections of everything being down. So that was really how we started our budget process, expecting to have a reduction in funding. We have all of our administrators submit their budgets by Thanksgiving. And then at that time, our business administrator Cheryl Fornier goes over each part of those to review them. Then myself and Cheryl start meeting with all of our administrators the month of January at that to get ready to have our school committee budget workshops. Those start at the end of January and go through February. All of that leads up to the school committee approving a budget on March 1st. So that budget is then presented to the Budget Committee. We did that on March 11th. We then had a follow-up, an adjustment at the Budget Committee on March 25th. And that is when we also got Budget Committee approval. Then a presentation to the City Council on April 6th where we also got approval for that. We have some concerns during the budget workshop, there were concerns about our carryover and if we were using any of that carryover to come back and address a reduction of taxes. Looking ahead, we have some concerns down the line, so we did not use any of that carryover. We used some of it in parts of the budget, but as a whole, it was not put in there as a revenue item for that. Sometimes that had been done in previous years. And then when we didn't meet those projections, it's challenging, so this year didn't do that. Looking ahead, we are concerned that when you look at our enrollment, that really drives our state subsidy as one of the major drivers. If you look at our enrollment this year, it was down due to COVID. We did have a number of people who did draw their students to homeschool them based on the pandemic. Also, this year, we were able to get an adjustment to the formula in the teacher ratio that was very favorable to Sanford. And so that allowed us to have about $291,000 in funding. That's something, and it was only a one-time for this 2021-2022 funding. And we're also, like other southern Maine communities, seeing the valuation in Sanford going up for that. So our projections are if nothing changes and you look at our enrollment going down, valuation going up and not changing that ratio, we have concerns that we could have a loss of subsidy over $1 million. Got to get a quick overview of our process. We start, when we started way back at the end of January, we had a budget at that time that had an increase of 14.4%. But we got to go, we got to work with our, with the school committee and the school committee workshops. At that time, we had budgeted a 5% insurance increase. At that time, we were told that it would be, then did not expect an increase, so we were able to lower the budget there. We also made some miscellaneous adjustments at the beginning of February. We also saw that our tuition from Acton was going to be higher than we anticipated. We also got updated revenue projections for community adult education. We made some changes and reductions of some positions. We also had some leases that we looked at that were different. Then our health insurance came in, we got the actual number. And instead of holding steady, it was a 5.77% decrease. We did use some of that money to cover the H R A that we have in our collective bargaining agreement for sending exposure there. And so we recommended, as I mentioned, to the Budget Committee on March 25th, a budget where we reduced it by $226,000. And that was an overall increase to the Budget Committee that was approved of $271,502, which was a 1.7% increase for that. If you look at that summary, and when I, we talk about that increase for that going back, you can see that that's a net taxation increase of 1.7%, $271,502. So one thing I want to point out, that also includes the bond payment, the local bond payment that we had that was part of our being able to update our elementary and middle school construction projects that were state-funded due to any cuts we had to have the budget, the value, the famous value engineering. Were able to come back and bring that in. That, this year, we now have our first payment for that. That is $430,262. So when you look at that, actually, when you turn the page for next net taxation, when you look at it with that bond payment, we're actually down $158,760. For the summary, if you kind of look at this budget for 2021-2022, how it compares to the 2020-2021 budget, you'll see that general education expenses are up, $533,214, that would be 1%. If you go and look at that bond expense increase that I talked about of $430,000, you then have. you then have, general education is up point-two percent at a hundred-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-two. So we feel we're proud of this budget. At the end of the day, it's able to come and be able to meet our needs for the school department. We're also being very careful and understanding for our taxpayers and balancing that. We want to make sure that we go forward and make sure that we're not creating any cliffs. One of the things that did come up in our city council and budget committee workshops was we have received significant federal funding through our ESER funds. But those ESER funds right now are not, were not dedicated to being able to be put towards your operating budget or towards your tax relief. They were really focused on COVID-nineteen and how we can be able to work to get all of our students back in-person learning five days a week. As the school committee, we're, as a school department, we're working very hard to be able to come back and use those funds. Those are funds that don't have to be spent in one year, they can also be allocated for two thousand-and-twenty-one, two thousand-and-twenty-two, as well as two thousand-and-twenty-two, two thousand-and-twenty-three, and two thousand-and-twenty-three, two thousand-and-twenty-four. So those are going to be resources that we can use, as I said, to get all of our students back and also focus on the educational recovery. I do want to point out that Governor Mills released a state budget plan last week that increases general purpose aid to schools by a hundred-and-eighty-seven million dollars. And by doing that, that will bring the state's share of the cost of education to fifty-five percent. And that was a level that was approved by voters fifteen years ago that has never been fulfilled. In the governor's proposal, if it is approved by the legislature, it would not only make good on that fifty-five percent obligation, but it also could provide resources for schools as well as hold down local property taxes. And those proposed changes would apply for the fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three. And so when we look at the governor's budget change package proposal, the E P S total allocation for each school's unit would not change from the current enacted totals. The proposal would only impact the percentage of state and local contributions. And as I mentioned, the state's share contribution would rise to meet that fifty-five percent of the total cost of pre-K through grade twelve education, while the total local share contribution would decrease. And so it looks like through that, the mill rate would also be affected, and that would be decreased from seven-point-nine in the enacted baseline budget, reduced down to seven-point-two-six in the governor's proposed budget change package. So if that is to be approved, our preliminary estimates in Sanford look like to us to receive almost eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. And it is our intent for that additional funding to go towards and put that towards tax relief with that, because as I mentioned, that was information that came in after we've had our budget approved by the city council and going off to the voters for referendum. But as I said, it's our intent to be able to use any of that additional funding that we get to be able to put that back, because we have worked on a budget here that's meeting our needs for the upcoming year, but also is trying to be responsible and manageable for us to continue to move in the, move forward. So, so I'm here to speak in favor of the budget. I think I'm for that. So I'm also open if there's any questions that people have.
Thank you Superintendent Nelson. I did see Council Lanigan's hand go up, but now it's down again. So I'm going to assume he doesn't have anything, any questions, maybe you answered all of his questions. Council Lanigan, are you all set?
Yes, I'm good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in favor? Do we want to mention when this will be on, this will be a vote on June sixth?
Tuesday, June eighth.
Tuesday, June eighth, I'm sorry. I always forget the date. I know it's a Tuesday. And ballots are available right now in City Hall. Council Stackpole does have a hand.
Yeah, I was going to save my comments till later, but just a quick question to the superintendent, and I apologize for being a little foggy this evening. So going back to your statement about the increase in state revenue, increasing it to fifty-five percent, did you say that that will not affect this budget? And that it will only, it'll be available for twenty, what would it be, twenty-two, twenty-three? Did I hear that right, or?
Nope, I, that, no, I think it's gonna, this proposed changes would apply for the fiscal year two thousand-and-twenty-two budget, this one right here coming up, as well as the fiscal year two thousand-and-twenty-three as well.
Okay, all right. And so the other two comments I have, first of all, this was approved unanimously by the budget committee. I think everyone's aware of that, but it's worth saying again. And the school department really did a terrific job working on this. And I think it is a wonderful thing, again, if I'm hearing things correctly, that you will take the increase in state subsidy and use it for property tax reduction. I think that that is wonderful payback, and the whole community should be appreciative of that. Again, as you know Superintendent, the community stood behind you, voted for the bonds, did everything they could. We just talked about what a great, wonderful high school that was built. But, and so they're, they're, they do a little break, and I think, I think that's absolutely wonderful. And I'm sure the council thanks you for that, and, but I certainly thank you for that, and it will, I'm sure, provide benefits for you moving forward into future school budgets. You have this opportunity to do this, and you're stepping up and taking the opportunities to do that, so.
And remember, it still needs legislature approval.
Right, I understand.
The hope is that it'll get that, because I think everyone is seeing how it is going to be, as I mentioned, impacts in those areas of local property taxes and resources. I think in Sanford, with the federal funding that we have and what we've been able to prepare, as I said, we, we're in a decent shape for that. Other communities might not be as lucky and need to be able to use some of those funds for us, we able to tax relief. But also remember, I'll be back here next year as well, and we'll be seeing that in terms of that, something we're going to have to be working towards to help us be able to maintain a budget that I like to say is sustainable, one that can be able to help us continue to meet the needs and also be fair to everyone.
Right, and rightly so, rightly so. It's money that should be spent on education, and wherever I am at that point in time, do my best to support spending it on education. So anyways, great, great job all around. Now, May, did you say June, June sixth or seventh?
Tuesday, and it's only, it's the only item on the ballot, so the school budget. I know that walk-up voting, early voting has been very slow. I'll, I'm meeting with the, presenting to the Rotary Club this, this Thursday to talk about the budget and promote it. I'll also be on chamber talk with Rick Stanley, not this weekend, but the following weekend. As I try to get out and be able to work to get our citizens out to be able to come back and be educated on the budget, but also come out and support it, because it does have to pass a voter referendum on June eighth.
Now, but these, these numbers, because it's, it's probably likely that the state budget will not be finalized by June eighth, we can hope that it will be. So we won't, again, we're voting for, I hate to use this term, but it's an apt term, the worst-case scenario in terms of tax impact, that it will only get better presumably once the state finalizes their budget. Is that fair to say? You're going to be using the existing numbers, you're likely not going to be able to roll in this new revenue.
It's not going to be rolled in. Budget is going to be the budget. Absolutely right, Council Stackpole.
So everybody needs to be aware of that.
Okay. Thank you, Council Stackpole. So anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else, anyone to speak against? No hands. Thank you Superintendent Nelson. The public hearing is now closed. Twenty-one dash two-two-two dash zero-one, a continuation of the public hearing started on May fourth, two thousand and twenty on a proposed cable television franchise agreement between the city of Sanford and Comcast of Maine, New Hampshire. The public hearing is open, has remained open. I know that we have further information from our attorney, so I think I'm going to just turn it over to you then.
Madam Mayor, and good evening again, city council members and members of the public. Before the public this evening is a final draft of the cable television franchise agreement between the city of Sanford and Comcast Cable. Draft of the agreement was initially presented to the public at the council's previous May fourth meeting. And now the city and Comcast have agreed to all the terms of the draft franchise agreement. And the agreement is now before the public for additional comment and the city council's final review and vote. Now, during the last public hearing, myself and representatives from Comcast outlined the major substantive provisions of this agreement. And since that time, the city and Comcast have negotiated two additional provisions. I've been asked here tonight to provide the public with a brief overview of those amended provisions and to again provide just a very brief overview of the major components of the draft franchise agreement. So this proposed cable franchise agreement between the city and Comcast is a ten-year agreement that may be renewed at the end of that ten-year period. Comcast is proposing to build out its cable television system, as the public will see, to essentially every existing street within the city. Steve, I don't know if you want to get that map up and share that. So here is the map that is included as a part of the agreement. As the public will see, the streets in the city of Sanford are depicted in red on the map, and then the areas where Comcast will build out its infrastructure is depicted in And what Comcast is proposing is to essentially cover the entire footprint of the city with its, with its initial build-out. Comcast has also offered to provide the city with two public educational and governmental access channels. And both of those channels will be provided to the city in either standard definition or high-definition format. Comcast is also proposing to provide the city with a one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar grant, twelve-thousand dollars of which will be provided each year. And the city will be allowed to use this grant for the purposes of purchasing equipment and constructing facilities associated with these public educational and governmental access channels, or PEG for short. Additionally, Comcast has offered to provide broad categories of programming to residents within the city. This programming includes news, sports, affairs, children's entertainment, foreign language, and local programming. In addition, Comcast has agreed to use all commercially reasonable efforts to maintain French foreign language speaking channels on its cable service offerings to subscribers within the city. Comcast is also proposing to pay the city a franchise fee of five percent of Comcast's gross annual revenue, which is derived from Comcast's operation of the cable system within the city. As previously mentioned, there are two amendments that were made to the agreement from when we last met in a public meeting to date. And the first of these amendments is that the city and Comcast have agreed to language providing that in the unlikely event that Comcast abandoned its cable TV infrastructure and the city's right of ways, the city may take ownership of this infrastructure and dispose of it in any manner the city sees fit, resorting to statutory process that is outlined by Maine's abandoned property statutes. In addition, the city has also agreed to refrain from requiring Comcast to defend the city against any civil claim arise from the city's vote to enter into this franchise agreement with Comcast. And so with that, that really concludes my sort of brief summary of the franchise agreement before the public tonight. And with that, I will open the floor to comments or questions the public may have for either the city or Comcast. I believe Tim Kelly and Brian Christensen from Comcast are both present tonight.
I muted, sorry, I muted myself. I do see one hand up from the public, Lee Burnett.
Evening. You know, Lee Burnett, Springville resident, also one of the few members of the community who has been trained on the equipment that W S S R T V has, both cameras and the video editing. I wanted to speak about the revenue that is coming to the city if this contract is approved, which I think is a good thing. I've heard, you know, a hundred-and-twenty thousand is going to go towards facilities and that there would be another five percent of gross revenues. I think that should go directly to W S S R T V. We have, you know, plenty of PEG channels, but we have hardly any programming. And with some dedicated revenue, we could do quite a lot. If you check out public access channels in other communities, you can see the breadth of programming that's available. It's essentially every, every organization in Sanford, every club, every person who's fanatic about a hobby could produce video that could be programming. But we need somebody, we need staff to be able to train people to, you know, slot it in the program. There's just, there's just too much to do without having dedicated staff to do it. We also, another thing, if we had staff, we have, the Sanford Film Festival is now on TV, but it comes and goes so quickly that I don't think people even realize it was here this year. But we've got thousands of hours of movies that are being submitted every year. We could, if we had staff, we could turn a lot of that, maybe most of that, into programming. But, you know, as I said, we need some staff, they don't really have the staff to do it right now. I think if we had good public access stations, it's not just about, you know, entertaining us with local programming. I think, for example, it could improve the council's job in a lot of areas. I mean, I think we could do, I think we have a higher vaccination rate if we had a decent PEG channel. I think we might have higher subscription rate among businesses for our Sanford Net Fiber if we had a good public access channel that does, you know, you can do education. You can use this as a tool to advance council priorities. And I think it could also, I know the city's talking about hiring a marketing person, which is great, you need professional in that position, but I think you can magnify what a marketing person could do if we had decent public access programming. So I think we can magnify a lot of initiatives if we had decent programming, but we need staff to produce it. Producing it is not going to be hugely expensive, but we need somebody who can do the training, supervise the volunteers, but it would be, add a lot to the life of the community, I feel. So that's just, I think the contract's great, but I would hope that the city would put this money into W S S R T V. Thanks.
Thank you, Lee, for those comments. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak against? I will declare the public hearing closed. Be acting on this item later in the agenda. Okay, consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda. Are there objections to any items on the consent agenda? Maura, your...
Can we pull off number two? The tier one from Pine Coast Farm, 12 Smata Drive and Safer, please.
Thank you. Without objection, item two is removed from the consent agenda. And we will be, and the consent agenda consists of items one and three. Are there any objections? Being none, the consent agenda, as amended, is approved. Now, can I just ask a procedural question? Because this is the first time I've had this, Steve. Do we need to act now on number two, or should I do that under new business?
My understanding is that the application has been withdrawn, so there's no action to be taken.
Okay, so I don't, we don't have to deny it at all. So it just goes away. Thank you for that clarification. I apologize. I just wanted to make sure we did it appropriate. So, old business. Twenty-one dash two-two-three dash zero-one. Order to authorize the city manager to enter into the proposed cable television franchise agreement between the city of Sanford and Comcast of Maine, New Hampshire, Inc., pursuant to City Code, Chapter, Section 96 dash four. Steve, I'm going to just, if there's any discussion, we'll have that first and then I'll ask for a motion. Any more presentation that you have?
There's no more presentation from the administrative side of this equation. I'd like to thank our attorney, legal representative, Benjamin Plant, for the work he's done on behalf of the city in representing the city's interest in this. I'd also like to extend my appreciation to Comcast for the very favorable discussion and the work product that's been developed on this agreement. See, this is a very favorable position for the city to be in, to have a further competitive environment out there for cable TV services, as well as the ancillaries that come with that type of a system, which is ISP provisions. Thank you.
Councillor Stackpole, you have your hand up. Is that to make a motion or to ask a question of the city manager?
I don't have a question, but I have a statement that I'd like to make about the proposal. So it depends on where you want me to...
You can make that, and then we can make, and then someone else can, I'll ask for a motion. That's fine. Discussion can ensue while we make the motion.
Sure. So this is kind of a piggyback off of Lee's comment. And it's, I'm going to say this is geared mainly to City Council members because for many years, we have had concerns about WSSR-TV. And one of the major problems with WSSR-TV is funding. And no one, in my experience, and I'm sorry if I ruffle feathers with this, the school comes up with a limited budget and the city comes up with a limited budget. And there's really no growth in the programs. And I mean the overall programs, not what you watch on TV, of WSSR-TV. They have some equipment, but they could use more. As far as I know, they have really one person running the whole show there, literally, who is very, very, very busy, if not impossibly busy, trying to keep things going. With the revenue that's going to come in from us participating in this new franchise, I would urge the city council to take a very hard look at WSSR and have some kind of a vision, some kind of input into how this funding is provided to the channel. Because this is our probably one bite at the apple. There's not going to be, I don't think, another cable franchise coming to Sanford and offering this kind of money for us to put into our local PEG channels. You know, it's been a number of years, and this is our opportunity to kind of right the ship and get it going the right way. I know other people are trying to do this. I know there's a WSSR committee. I went to those meetings recently. I know Councillor Hanselman has. It needs direction, it needs input, it needs a budget. It needs all of those things. And I really think it's going to take council leadership to say, this is really what we want, in combination with the school needs. And I would say we're going to work together on that. But it's really going to take council input to say, this is where we want it to go, this is what we want to see. We have some money now, let's begin to set that up. So I really, really think we need to, we need to do it.
I just want you to know that that has been the theme of the last couple of leadership team meetings that we've had with the school department, among the chairs of groups and superintendent managers. So we are having ongoing discussions, and it will be back in a minute. I'm going to just ask, before we continue...
Just going to say one more, one more time. This is probably going to be our one bite at the apple to fix this. So please, let's fix this.
We are on the same page. I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll move. We approve the contract.
Thank you, Councillor Stackpole. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councillor Hanselman. We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on the contract? I see no hands up, so I will call the roll. Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Tuttle is absent with notice. Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Councillor Lanigan? Where are you?
Not sure he's here anymore.
Is he still here, Larissa, before I go on?
No, it doesn't look like it.
Okay, so Councillor Lanigan is absent. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that is five votes in favor and two absent. Contract is in effect as soon as the city manager signs it. So, thank you. Thank you, Ben. New business.
To the council members, and I just want to say, I have an opportunity to work with the city on this. It's been a pleasure, truly.
Thank you for saying that. It's been a pleasure for us. Anybody have anything else before I go on to the next item?
Madam Mayor, Tim Kelly from Comcast.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, Tim.
No, my apologies. I just want to say thank you to the council, to the city manager, Ben, on behalf of Comcast. We're very excited to come into the city, start to build our day-to-day art future-proof network and start providing, you know, our services and products to the city residents. It is cable television, but just sometimes people don't realize we're also bringing broadband into the city, as well as telephone and other offerings. So we're very, very excited and thank you to the city for good-faith negotiations, very civilly done. It was just, it was truly, I don't want to call it a pleasure because it was a little painful at times, but it was just very well done. And we're very thankful.
Welcome to Sanford. We're happy to have you. So, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Okay, new business. Twenty-one dash two-three-one dash zero-one. Order to approve the following license and to authorize the city clerk to sign on behalf of the speaker house a new medical marijuana property license from Acres Real Estate Management, 12 Smata Drive, Sanford, Maine. I guess I'm going to let this be presented first. There's information that we need before I ask for a motion. Is it Jamie that's going to do this?
Yes, I would ask Jamie to present on this. I realize there's some confusion looking at the names of the real estate management company, as well as the property, so I'll let Jamie speak on this.
Thank you, and then I'll ask for a motion.
So this is slightly confusing because Acres Property Management just got approved for their license at 81 Industrial Ave. Basically, Cal Acres, the owner of Acres Real Estate Management, owns 81 Industrial Ave, and he has leasing 12 Smata Drive from the owner of the building to sublet to different cultivators and/or manufacturers. So we're not issuing the same, Cal is not intending to operate from this facility as well. He is just renting the building to sublet to more tenants. He ran out of space at his facility, so he is, he's just helping out the owner on this property.
Thank you. Before we discuss as a council, I'm going to ask for a motion. Motion to approve. Is there one?
Yes, I'm asking to approve.
From Deputy Mayor Hurley, and a second by Councillor Stackpole. Is there a discussion by the council or questions of Jamie? No, I see none, then I will call the roll. Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Tuttle is absent with notice. Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
And Councillor Lanigan is absent. And Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yeah.
And I am also a yes. That is five in favor and two absent.
Well, one of the, one of our visitors tonight has mentioned that internet in Springville has been difficult today, and that might be why something, Lanigan is having difficulty evening.
Yep. I think that is possible because I can't believe I had trouble and I've never had, not on wood, I don't want to have it again. Nope, he was, he's fine. I'm just, just want to make sure that if you see him come back on, let me know so that I can make sure I call. Okay, Hurley. Twenty-one dash two-five-five dash zero-one. Order to appoint David Caswell to the Airport Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired term for the position of York County resident who may or may not hold the pilot's license pending December 31st, 2021, pursuant to Section 205.1 of the Sanford City Charter. Steve, do you want to just present this information before we ask for a motion?
Yes, pursuant to the applicant's background, the background information for this applicant is that he currently, they have a current vacancy for a York County resident who may or may not hold a pilot's license on the Airport Advisory Committee due to a resignation of a former committee member. Caswell lives in Elliott, a licensed commercial pilot and a glider pilot, and is a member of the Sanford Soaring Club, that's the glider club that's there at the airport. He's a retired federal OSHA safety and health manager and a retired officer in the New Hampshire Air National Guard, where he is an experienced aircraft mechanic, crew chief, and first sergeant for a squadron of 130. Long history as a safety consultant, and his airplane maintenance and flight experience make him particularly well-qualified to serve on this committee. Wants to help the airport manager with the development of the airport and encourage value and use of the airport for pilots, the citizens of Sanford and Southern Maine. An exceptional resume was presented as part of this applicant's package.
I would agree, Steve. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Councillor Stackpole, second by...
Martel.
By yours, Councillor Martel. Sorry, it's hard for me to keep you all straight. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that it sounded like this person was extremely well-qualified, and I'm glad that he's willing to help serve on this committee. That's great.
I agree with you totally. Almost sounds like he's overqualified, doesn't he? Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Tuttle absent with notice. Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Councillor Lanigan absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is five in favor and two absent. Okay, next. Just a lot, I'm just trying to keep everything straight, so just have a little patience, guys. Okay, twenty-one dash two-zero-one dash zero-one. Order to create a rail trail task force with members appointed by the mayor for the purpose of resolving issues with multi-use conflicts, rail trail portion of the trail system. And I'm going to just take this one, Steve, if that's okay with you. The property subcommittee discussed this, and we're, what I've got in front of me now is not a complete membership yet because we're still waiting for people to say yes or no. I have tasked Dave Parent to be the chair of this committee. It will have barely equal representation from all the stakeholders, in other words, the users of the trail. And they're, we chose people who we considered have not had open minds, representing all of the stakeholders. And they're going to try to come up with some solutions within 60 days and report back to the city council. And I will, once the names are finalized, we want to get this going as quickly as possible, which is why it's on the agenda. But I can promise you that we already have a number of people who've already committed to serving, and once it's complete, the entire membership will be released, and those people will start working as soon as possible. And that's why it's on the agenda, even though we hadn't been able to contact everyone. So, since, I think we do need to vote on this, correct, Steve?
No, I don't know that there's a vote necessary. You have the authority to appoint the committee, but the delay is contacting all of the various appointees that has been proposed.
Correct. Does anyone have any questions on the council about what we're trying to do? Short-term focused, have delegated the responsibility for organizing and taking care of it to Dave Parent. Okay? I'm not seeing any hands up, so thank you. Okay, twenty-one dash two-three-five dash zero-one. Order to create a mineral extraction working group with members appointed by the mayor for the purpose of working to review and update the ordinances pertaining to mineral extraction by March 31st, 2022. Bring much the same situation here. I know this was at the zoning subcommittee. I actually have that committee. And we are well on our way to having a complete committee that will meet regularly, work on this ordinance, and report back to the zoning subcommittee, with the intention of having this all completed by next March, 2022. Do I have that correct, Councillor Stackpole? Okay, I see a head. Okay, so, and we'll let you know, the members of that committee, as soon as everything is finalized, okay? But they are going to be working on our behalf. More power to them all. I hope they can work it all out. I have a lot of faith in both of those groups to do what we're asking them to do. Okay, now. We are going to go on to twenty-one dash two-four-one dash zero-one. I will start with. This hearing is to determine whether 18 Winter Street, Sanford, identified as tax map K28, Lot 67, is further described... Did everybody hear that music?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that was.
Okay, so I'm going to, because this is a legal hearing that we're going to start now. So I'm going to just, and I do have a script, and I want to make sure that I do it properly because we are on, even though we are doing this virtually, I think we just need to make sure we abide by everything that we're supposed to. So twenty-one dash two-four-one dash zero-one. This hearing is to determine whether 18 Winter Street, Sanford, identified as tax map K28, Lot 67, and further described in a deed reported in New York County Registry of Deeds at Book 17371, Page 287, and mortgages reported at Book 14314, Page 300, and Book 14314, Page 326, is a dangerous building for a nuisance within the meaning of 17 MRSA Chapters 280, 2851 to 2859, and to determine what, if any remedy, is appropriate. Notice of this hearing was duly served on the owner and parties in interest and advertised in the newspaper on April 23rd, 30, and May 7th, as required by law when an owner or party in interest is unknown or is not assertive with reasonable diligence. In addition, notice of the option to participate in this hearing... In addition, notice of the option to participate in this hearing communicated to the owner by email. Parties in interest did not communicate to the city of Sanford prior to the hearing. They intended to be present and testified at the hearing. We'll have the city presentation by, I think, Ian House, Director of Community Development.
That's correct, uh, thank you, counselors, uh, Ian House, I'm the Director of Community Development. I also have with me Aaron Letter, uh, code enforcement officer. Um, I've got a fair amount of material to get through and, um, we've got three of these, uh, to adjudicate uh, this evening as well. Um, so, um, uh, the first one will take a little bit more time, but we should be able to pick up speed as we move along. Um, I've got up on my screen right now, um, the introduction for the eighteen Winter Street. And then as well, um, I'd like to start off by, um, also running through some pictures, um, related to it to give you a sense of the property and the site. Um, the site, um, is on Winter Street, it's, uh, near Riverside Avenue. Uh, it's very much your main drag, um, it's across, um, your east-west main drag. Um, it's across the street from, uh, the St. Ignatius, um, building. Um, and, um, looking closer at the property, um, you can see that the roof looks like it's in reasonably good repair. However, you can, the two thousand seventeen photograph, uh, you could see a, a tarp, um, strewn across the, uh, rear lot. Um, and then, um, uh, it looks like it'd come off the, uh, the back garage here. Um, photographs, um, this photo was taken, um, after, um, the city secured this building. Uh, we secured it, uh, pursuant to the law that you referenced. Um, we, we, um, put up no trespassing signs as well. Um, in this picture, you can also see a, a, a fair amount of, uh, overgrowth. Uh, keep in mind, this is the, uh, the image that, um, people see, uh, from, um, the, uh, your, your Winter Street. Um, this is a rear picture, um, you can see, uh, we secured these built windows as well, there's some pictures that you'll see throughout of, uh, this basement door, uh, open. Um, we secured this, uh, rear, uh, building as well and, um, its window. Um, you can see another image of the, the side of this building, you can see the electricity, um, there's no meters here. Um, you could see some of the remnants of, uh, vegetation, uh, in the windows, vegetation wrapping around the electrical lines, fair amount of peeling paint, um, sagging buildings, I mean, uh, uh, sagging, sagging fascia, um, and then additionally, um, just, uh, a variety of just disrepair around the structure. Um, the, this is just another, um, backed up shot of that facade. You know, if, if it had been, uh, ten, fifteen years ago, ten years ago, um, it, it, you could imagine that this would have been a much more pleasant building, uh, to look at. Uh, here's a sort of, uh, shot of the side, um, a number of these windows were, um, open. Um, and, um, there's, um, been, um, people occupying the inside of this building, uh, entering through some of these windows. Um, these, uh, these garage bays, uh, have also been open at times. Um, most recently, the city secured this center one underneath the basketball, um, hoop here. Um, a variety of notices on the building, um, this is a rear picture, um, you can, there, there'll be other pictures, but you can see that some of the chimney material has fallen off. Um, this is a notice that the city put on, and these are, um, you can also see another notice where the city, uh, put on a no trespassing in this location. Um, and you can see the general disrepair of how someone might access the back, um, side of this building. Uh, this is a picture taken of the, uh, what it looks like behind the garage, um, just, uh, general, um, trash and, um, some debris. Um, and then this is a picture just, uh, showing, uh, the securing, you can see the padlock that the city had put on the door. Um, in some cases, um, the, the doors were either barred, um, some cases they were padlocked, um, where, where the building had been, uh, left open. Again, you can see the general disrepair of the, the, the deck and the access to the, to the rear buildings. And then finally, uh, for the pictures, um, this is what your, what your image is, uh, in our street. Um, people notice, um, that this property is, is vacant. Um, we tried to be discreet in how we were barring the door, uh, but it's, uh, an improvement to, uh, that, that it was generally open. Um, back to these other documents, um, starting with the ownership, um, there's some good information that can be gleaned, um, from the tax assessor's card. The property is owned by Bradley Esterbrook, uh, out of Laconia, New Hampshire. Uh, Mr. Esterbrook has, has owned this property, uh, since two thousand, uh, four. Uh, for a period, he owned it alone, uh, then he owned it with, uh, Elaine Esterbrook. Transferred it in two thousand and seven. Uh, and then Bradley Esterbrook, uh, owned it alone again in two thousand and sixteen. Um, the assessed value is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And, um, going down to the, uh, another useful information, the, the assessor has this, uh, depreciated at roughly fifty percent. Um, so that just, um, shows, um, uh, it's, it's current state and, um, our assessor does a very good job of keeping up with, uh, how, um, how depreciated these, uh, buildings are, so, uh, fifty percent depreciation is, is really getting down there um, in, uh, in, in, in value. Um, these are some of the original deeds, uh, that show that, um, Mr. Esterbrook owned it. Um, he bought it from, uh, Elaine Lemlin in two thousand and four. Uh, this shows the deed, um, where, um, Elaine Esterbrook, um, was brought on, um, to ownership and then, um, um, solely again to, uh, Brad Esterbrook. Uh, there are two mortgages, uh, that, that are on this property. Um, I won't run through them, they're, they're lengthy, but if you would like to review, review them, the first one, um, is, is up on the screen right now. Um, second one, um, is, uh, also, um, here. Um, and then these mortgages, um, were, were assigned, um, this is the first assignment, second assignment, third assignment. Um, and then there was a, uh, foreclosure complaint, um, filed, um, from, um, one of the mortuaries against Bradley Esterbrook. And then, um, you can neatly see that, uh, the, the additional, um, mortuary, uh, that, that's referenced back, um, to the two mortgages that sit on the property. Um, this was a, um, foreclosure, um, action, uh, that was begun, uh, back in two thousand and eighteen. Um, it's still not closed, uh, just a reminder, I always had to remind myself that we're in, in twenty-twenty-one now, so it's over three years a, ago, um, where, where, where no further action has been taken. Um, and then most recently, um, the, one of the mortgages was, uh, again, um, assigned, uh, forward to another entity. So all told, um, one, two, three, uh, four assignments, um, and, um, that, and, and with two mortgages sitting on this property. Um, as far as, uh, notice of hearing, so how, um, Mr. Esterbrook and the other parties of interest have been made aware of, of this hearing. Um, this is the notices of, a notice of hearing that was sent, um, to these entities, um, including the owner. Um, this, this notice went to, uh, New Residential Mortgage LLC, as well as First Community Bank. Um, it was filed in the registry of deed at this book and page as required. Um, additionally, as I mentioned, um, the city did, um, secure the building. Um, it, it was, um, observed to be abandoned, neglected, dilapidated without property security. Um, the doors to the building and garage were open, unlocked, broken. Um, and, um, there were vagrants, um, in the building. This was not just occurring on one occasion, it happened on multiple occasions as you'll see. Um, and, um, the city took the action by where we, uh, locked the building, uh, barred it, and then posted against, um, trespassing. So to, um, document, um, that Mr. Esterbrook, um, has received these notices, um, he, um, he's received them and he confirmed, so this is an email, um, first, uh, from myself, uh, to Mr. Esterbrook, uh, informing of, of this hearing. Um, and also the notice securing, I explained to him how he could attend this meeting and hearing, uh, to, to speak. Um, I, I don't know whether he's here tonight, but, um, you know, uh, it's possible we'll find out, um, afterwards. Um, and then, um, this is his receipt confirmation, I've received your email, and he gave me his telephone number and contact information as well. Um, certified, uh, receipts, uh, from, uh, the banks, uh, you could see that, um, it was delivered, um, by certified mail. It was signed for, um, and then also to First Community Bank, um, it was, uh, delivered, uh, and, uh, and signed for. Um, we went additional, took an additional step, um, we, um, advertised this in, in the paper, uh, the local paper. Um, and, um, this is a paper that's, uh, distributed, um, in imprint, um, throughout the town and, and multiple locations. It's free, people can access it. Um, and, um, this is the notice, um, that was, uh, advertised on page three for eighteen Winter Street, bringing people of this hearing on this date. Um, additionally, uh, that was done on, uh, uh, four twenty-three, twenty-one. Uh, second notice was on four thirty, um, and here's, on, again, on page three, on, on that date um, of, uh, of March thirtieth, and then again on, uh, May seventh. Um, so, um, two Fridays prior to this meeting, so, uh, advertised three times as required by law. Um, so, um, those that, um, might have interest in this property, um, are, are aware that this hearing was taking place and, and that's, um, that's, that's confirmable. Um, I will, um, at this point, just, uh, ask, uh, Aaron to unmute, um, and we'll try to riddle this out as far as the city's correspondences um, with the, um, property owner and, and mortuaries. Um, it, it looks to me, um, as if there was a, uh, a vacant building license, um, uh, filed back in two thousand and eighteen. Um, and Aaron, and, and is there a, is there a vacant license currently or, um, or has there been a lapse at some point?
That's, uh, it is currently, uh, licensed until July of this year. Uh, there was, um, a brief lapse from the payment when they switched servicing companies, uh, such as Safeguard, you'll see their name on some of the documents, and they're the company that was hired to maintain the property. Um, but they have had a vacant building license, uh, current.
And then, um, then, um, I'll just note the dates here, so, um, back in May nine, seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, um, looks like you, uh, noticed, um, a, a number of parties on this, um, trying to resolve what looks like a notice of violation, um, from an inspection on May sixteenth. Um, the, the violation, well, the, actually, that was, um, uh, Jeannie Wood that, uh, filed that, uh, notice of violation. And it looks like in two thousand and nineteen, uh, the Sanford Police Department reported that, uh, people were accessing the inside of the building. Um, and, um, you were demanding that, or Jeannie was demanding that the building be secured. Um, and it, I, I believe that had been resolved.
Correct.
Yep. Um, and then, um, furthermore, this is the same copy, but, um, Mr. Esterbrook signed, um, and said that he would comply, so that's what I'm, I'm hearing, uh, from you as well.
Yep.
There's another, um, notice of violation, um, here, um, looks like on February eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, uh, narrowing down the properties, and, and by the way, that these were, these were all sent, uh, regular and certified mail receipt. So, um, confirm that, um, that these were received. Um, and, um, in these violation notices, uh, it looks like you went a little further. Um, and, um, in this case is, in this case, it looks like, um, um, that the exterior is, is, uh, unmaintained. Um, you're referencing a code, um, violation here, uh, under the city code, under the existing building, um, International Property Maintenance Code, two thousand and fifteen, uh, section, uh, three oh four point one. Um, so the generally, uh, exterior is unmaintained as we've talked about. Um, again, you're referencing, um, the garage roof is sagging, so you, you remember those, uh, pictures of the tarps, um,
Correct.
Things, uh, not functioning right about the, the roof of the, roof of this rear building. And that was, uh, three oh four, one point, one point eight, the property maintenance code. Um, I mentioned, uh, chimney, um, not in good repair, so you can see, here's another picture of it, it seems to be collapsing. Um, and that's, uh, three oh four, point, uh, one. Utilities are disconnected, um, that, that's, uh, contributing to, um, uh, a level of dangerousness, it seems like. And, uh, one oh eight, uh, one point five. Um, then as well, the structures in disrepair and lax maintenance, uh, one oh eight, one point three. Um, and then again, um, squatters were once again found in the property back in, um, uh, March, um, of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and that was again a violation of unsafe, um, situation, uh, one oh eight point one point five. Um, it continues, um, a violation of one oh four point six, uh, there, there's holes, um, in, in the walls, I, I didn't realize that the, 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 um, dilapidation had been so extensive, um, breaks, um, loose and rotting material, this is just, uh, is that just, this is just an example, as I understand, Aaron, are there's, there's other instances?
Correct.
Um, and then, uh, one oh four point one point one point, um, oh four point one point one twelve. Um, so I, I walked up on that deck myself, I didn't, um, I, I, uh, there was a, a fair opportunity to, to fall through, you can, um, you can see how much, um, snow, snow has spaced out over these gaps. Um, but I didn't realize and it, it makes sense that you observed as well that, uh, the, the balcony is deteriorating. Um, it's not adequately supported, it did feel a little, uh, unstable to me standing on top of it, do you think that's the, the case, Aaron?
Correct, there is no attachment.
Uh, and then, thank you. Um, and then also, um, the weed growth, um, you've got a picture here of, uh, the, uh, these vines creeping across the, uh, front of the building. And that would be a property maintenance code violation of, uh, three oh two point four.
Correct.
Um, if there's, um, anything else you wanna add, uh, with regard to that?
So I, I couldn't actually get photos in the interior of the property, but, um, I could see from the windows that, uh, there had been some, uh, spray paintings, some vandalism ha, uh, that had happened within the, in the property and the overall deterioration inside as well as, is completely, uh, uh, unknown because, uh, no inspection has been done inside. Um, but just from the look, it looks as if the interior is deteriorated, deteriorated as much as the, the exterior as well with the lack of maintenance.
You been inside, is that, Aaron, at some point in the past?
Uh, about five or six years ago in my previous job.
There's a lot of junk in there, I assume?
Uh, in the basement, there was, if it's been removed, I'm, I'm not sure.
Household trash kinda thing?
There was, yep.
Yeah, I think I kinda, I saw the same thing looking into the window, there's, uh, something big written on the wall, um, inside. Um, uh, here's a, um, utility report, um, the water's been off, uh, since two thousand and seventeen. Um, there's no, there's no, um, sewer balance, um, the electricity, um, meters have been removed, as I already, uh, mentioned. It sounds like there's been vandalism that's taken place, um, a, as, as well. So, um, we, we typically pull the police reports, um, for these dangerous buildings, um, I went ahead and, and highlighted, um, all the instances of, uh, of trespassing and other, uh, suspicious activity. Um, I'd note, I, I think I counted up, well, I did count up, um, eight instances between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-one of trespassing um, that, that have occurred in this building. Um, so, um, the, the city did, um, secure this building a second time, so after we secured it, it was broken in once again, um, within a So after we secured, it was broken in once again within a week. So I would suspect that there's a variety of things going inside, on inside. I can go now to the questions of what constitutes dangerous for you all. And then we can have a conversation about whether it rises to that level. And see if you've got any questions about the facts that are presented thus far. I've been just taking a look through my notes to make sure we've covered everything. So the statute talks about a couple different criteria of dangerousness. It starts off with unsafe. And this is a rather broad term, but I think it has a lot to do with other aspects. So I think when you've got a property that's abandoned, people are breaking in, it's unmaintained, it's not cared for, I think that that meets that criteria. It meets that criteria of being unsafe. But I'm welcome to discussion of that. The, as far as structurally unstable, I couldn't say that it does. Unsanitary, I think this one is actually quite obvious. The fact that it hasn't had water since two thousand and seventeen. People have been living inside on occasion, or at least squatting there overnight in their travels. When that happens, it carries with a variety of household trash, within smells, rots, and then, you know, the conditions under which they're living. You know, everybody needs to use a bathroom in the middle of the night when there's no facilities. It just happens as it is. So unsanitary, I would suggest. The combination of unsafe and unsanitary, lack of facilities, lack of electricity, really, and a lack of normal using of a building really makes it a fire hazard. That's in my opinion. And I would also suggest that it's unsuitable to how the occupancy to which it is put. So it's clearly been used. It's not being used in the correct way. It's, and I think I've already explained that. It's being used without power, without electricity, without sanitary facilities. And that's not an appropriate way to occupy a structure, a two-unit structure that's intended to be that. I don't think that, as far as the next column here, we can talk about these as well. But is it a hazard to health or safety because of? So we're talking about health, so that's sanitation. Talking about safety, is it unsafe? It is inadequately maintained. We've gone through a number of those pieces as to why it is that. Is it dilapidated? I think it is. Obsolescence, I don't think in this case, I don't believe that this building is obsolete. It fills a certain prominence on this street. It's not a, it's not a building that is obsolete to where it currently functions. But it is abandoned. And I think that's quite obvious. We've gone through a number of the requirements or the evidences of that. The water, they, just whoever wants to can go inside and visit, vandalize it however they see fit. It's not being cleaned up afterwards. There's possibly junk inside. It's unmaintained. And so that's what, that's what abandonment means. You know, although we can pinpoint someone that owns it, we know that there are people that should be taking care of it. They, it seems to be in this abandoned state. And then is it dangerous to life or property? So these really add to the first set here. You know, not only is it dangerous to life or property, excuse me, off the screen. It's dangerous to life because it's not used properly. Someone could get very hurt by living in there because they've, not that they've been allowed to live in, but they haven't been prohibited because it's unmaintained. And then not only is it dangerous to itself as the property, but it's dangerous to the other properties as well. And then furthermore, it really detracts from the property around it. It's, there are spillover effects from buildings like this. It has the impact of the people who live next door have to deal with the comings and goings in the middle of the night, have to deal with the noise, have to deal with the blue lights when someone's illegally in there, and whatever else is going on. And there's a component of fear in that, too. So I think, you know, life and property, you know, in a very, life, from the perspective of it, there's an immediate potential for life, loss of life. But additionally, there's the impact of the property itself and the surrounding properties. Aaron, anything else I'm missing here as far as this? Or anything else that, you know, really stands out to you that is absent?
No, I agree, just in reviewing these items, just in the condition of the property being unsafe, city code that we've adopted for the ordinances shows the condition of the property where it's lacking. And the fact that only the lawn was once in a while maintained by any kind of servicing company does not come into play with, you know, adequate maintenance being done. And so you can see how the property's fallen in disrepair and been abandoned. So it would be dangerous for anyone to be occupying that structure.
Thank you. So Ian, can we, at this point, ask some questions if we have them, please?
Yeah, yeah. And then after you have some questions, I think, you know, see if there's anybody in the audience who has responsibility for this.
Okay, can I do that first?
Fine.
Can I do that first, the owner response? And then we'll see if we have any questions because I have just a couple of questions and comments. So I forgot that. Is there an owner in attendance?
Or someone representing a party in interest?
You see anybody?
I see a couple names. I don't, I see a title that ends in Esquire. Maybe they're here for another item. I see someone with last name, first name Mark. Besides that, I don't see anybody else.
I would assume that they would know how to put up their hand. They wanted to speak, or they would have let you know ahead of time, correct?
They could do any of those things.
Okay, so we will go on to councillor comments or questions. I just want to say that this is a building that my mom used to live in the house next door, so I'm very familiar with it. I knew the people very well who lived in it. It was the same family for many, many, many years. And the fact, I can't believe it's been vacant since, did you say, two thousand and seventeen?
Yeah, that's when the water was turned off.
That's when the water was turned off. So the issue is that even before that time, it had begun to deteriorate. I'm really, I think that it is an extreme, extremely dangerous to life if somebody who's a squatter were to start a fire in a building that the water's turned off to. And they could kill themselves. And it's, it is, I know, a hell hazard because there are rats in the area. I just want to put that right up there. I mean, I think that this, in my opinion, based on what I've seen, it strikes all of those categories. I see a number of councillors with their hands up. I see that councillor Tuttle has joined us. Thank you councillor Tuttle. I see you're here. I'm going to start with councillor Martell for questions about whether this qualifies, if you understand the facts and criteria of what dangerous is and...
I just want to report for duty now that my caucus is over.
Oh, okay. Super. Thanks. Okay, councillor Martell.
Okay. So this is the first one of these I've seen, so I apologize if some of these questions are a little redundant. So just out of curiosity, it sounds like he's filed some, at least some paperwork to say that, hey, I know there's nobody living there, but I'm just letting the town know. I forget what you called it, but there was some form that you had said was filled out. And that's still current? Can you talk to that at all and how that process works and whether that has any bearing on this? A little bit, Ian?
Yeah, so we do require a vacant building license in the city. So there's two ways that that might apply. You're either going to have a vacant building that you maintain as an owner for a long period of time. And then there's also the vacant building aspect of that, that's abandonment. So that applies in the case where a property is not being maintained by the owner anymore, but is being maintained by, say, a mortgagee or another party in interest. In this case, the, a party in interest, one of the mortgagees has filed a foreclosure, but that was three years ago. There are further steps that would need to be taken to finish that foreclosure. I don't know the full details of that. I would guess that there's a couple of different, there's two mortgages that are involved in this. And progressing through those second, that second mortgage tends to be an issue for a mortgagee to foreclose. That doesn't abdicate, abdicate an owner from their responsibility to maintain their property, their property. There's no, there's no means by which someone may just walk away.
So let me ask you this. As far as the unsafe aspect, if the building is secure, is there something you can point to that is unsafe if someone is not trespassing onto the property?
Is there, is there something that's, sorry, say that again?
Is there something unsafe about the structure for someone that wouldn't be trespassing onto the property?
As far as the structure goes and its structural integrity, I can't speak to that. As far as there's the rear, you know, the approaches to the building, its decks and approaches, those are not structurally sound. What constitutes the unsafe aspect of it is its unsanitariness. The fact that it's unsecure for a large amount of time. Additionally, the, that the city had to secure it for the owner and the parties in interest because they didn't take responsibility for it. And then the long-term status of it as being vacant additionally makes it unsafe.
Okay.
Ian, can you just speak? I just want to make sure that councillor Martell is satisfied, but Officer Eric Small visited this building a number of times. And it has required, I mean, just, and found people living in it very recently, which is why this is in front of you now.
Yeah, if I was to go to the police report, you could look at, so I've got that up on the screen right now, the multiple instances of trespassing. I can see, I'm just counting the first two, a couple, I see arrests made. So police have entered into the building and arrested people for trespassing. But I don't know what specific, you know, what additionally was taking place. But, and it wasn't the same person each time. I do know that. So it's, it's not being used properly.
Without checking on it all the time, doesn't it seem to be impossible to really secure it?
It is.
It's one of those things that we're responsible for checking on it in a very consistent way that we shouldn't have.
Yeah, although people have camps that get broken into all the time, too. So, I mean, that's, yeah. I understand what you're saying. I just, you know, you can't always control what other people are going to do or try to do with your property. You had at least two notices. Was there any response to that second notice of code violations?
The one that had the whole list?
Yep. So representatives of Safeguard Properties called to have me meet them at the property while they, while they did just a, an exterior assessment to do a bid on how to, for the, for the mortgage company, to be able to fix all of the issues. So it was just meeting somebody to, that was there to bid on the project. It ended up not being anything that ever went forward, and I never heard from them again.
Okay. So does this sort of seem like the owner is just kind of walking away without technically walking away and just kind of letting it fall to the city? Is that kind of what it smells like? I'm just trying to get a feel for, you know, I'm sure you've seen these situations before.
It's, it's a problem nationwide. It's a problem statewide, councillor Martell. That's, and it's not acceptable to just drop it in someone else's lap. You own a property, it's your responsibility to take care of that, whether you want to or not.
I agree. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councillor Hanselman?
Thank you. I just wanted to make know or put out there that I'm concerned that I could have an appearance of a conflict of interest. I am in a butter, and I have had to manage multiple complaints from my tenants about their concerns on that property, both for trespassing that's gone to the Sanford Police Department, as well as, you know, pest rat issues that fairly significant in size and other concerns. So I don't know, Madam Mayor, if you feel that that's enough of a conflict to have me abstain from vote or not. Just wanted to make sure I mention that.
I, my ruling would be that you have no financial interest in that building. You do have, I mean, we all have an interest in every building that's around us in our community because anytime a building like that one is deteriorating in the center of our town, I think it affects all of us. So no, I do not think you have what constitutes financial interest in that building. Be you another thing if you own it. Which actually would be the answer is if we could get through that whole mortgage process, that foreclosure process, then someone could have had that building in a market that is, we have a housing crisis. So I think for a lot of us, that is a very, it's a prominent building that was well taken care of. And as soon as that landlord, the person who currently owns it, and I only know this because my mom lived next door, I knew the people that lived there, absentee landlord did not take care of the building from day one. Just putting it out there. So it's not just deteriorated over the last, since two thousand and seventeen, when they got a vacant building license. Took a lot longer than get to this. Are there any other questions or questions around dangerousness or what the criteria is before we go on? Has any owner showed up, Ian, that you can see?
Unless they've made themselves known. I haven't seen, I think I saw another telephone number come on here, but I don't see that...
All right. So I'm going to go on to the next item in the agenda. Will I have to declare the hearing closed?
Yes.
All right, so I will declare the hearing closed. Twenty-one dash two four two dash zero one. Based on the testimony and other evidence presented and made part of the records, Sanford City Council hereby attest the testimony and evidence and hereby finds... The building is abandoned as evidenced by no water service to the building since July two thousand and seventeen, and therefore no habitable occupancy since that time. Doors and windows are broken, left unlocked, open and missing, and generally unsecure, and the property is un... Doors and windows are broken, left unlocked, open and missing and generally unsecure, and the property is unmanaged and is therefore inviting to trespassers and vandals. Personal property and furnishings indicating habitable occupancy are absent from the property, and any rema- remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junk, debris and household trash, is a fire hazard and is unsanitary. The building and property is deteriorating so as to constitute a threat to public health and safety. Mortgagee initiated foreclosure proceedings in December 2018 and has taken steps to possession of the property but has not completed that process. Vandalism and other illegal acts were committed on the premises. Electrical power is disconnected with no electrical meters present on the building. C, the building is dilapidated as evidenced by plant overgrowth, missing siding, broken windows, missing windows, broken doors, deteriorated decks. D, inspections on May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, February second, twenty twenty-one found violations of City Code Chapter ninety dash thirteen B five two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Unsecure building and trespassing reported to the police, Chapter one oh eight point one point five seven, deteriorated and unmaintained exterior, Chapter three oh four point one, deteriorating sagging roof, garage roof three oh four point one point one one eight, chimney falling down, three oh four point one one, utilities disconnected, one oh eight point one point five, structure in disrepair and lax maintenance, one oh eight point three squatters found living in property, one oh eight point five. Exterior walls have holes, breaks, loose or rotting material, three oh four point six. Decks are deteriorated and inadequate, inadequately supported or anchored, three oh four point one point one two. Weed growth on exterior and through windows, Chapter three oh two point four. E, reports of trespassing were followed up on by the police in eight instances between two thousand nineteen and May twenty twenty-one, and other illegal acts being committed on the premises have been made to local law enforcement agencies. F, the building was secured pursuant to one seventeen M R S A Chapter twenty-eight fifty-six and posted no trespassing on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one with notice recorded in the Registry of Deeds at Book eight one eight six four seven, page one zero eight. Based on the foregoing finding, it is adjudged that eighteen Winter Street, Tax Map, J twenty-eight, Lot sixty-seven is a dangerous building and nuisance pursuant to seventeen M R S A Chapters twenty-eight fifty-one, twenty-eight fifty-nine because the building is unsafe and unsanitary, constitutes a fire hazard, is improper for the occupancy to which it is put, constitutes a ha- hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation and abandonment, and is otherwise dangerous to life and property because the abandoned building in, in unmanaged and uncared for condition of the property contributes to blight, acts as an attractive nuisance for vandalism and other illegal acts, all of which also negatively impact the property value, health, safety and welfare of surrounding properties and their occupants and their wealth. I will ask for a motion to approve this item.
A motion to approve.
Okay, I'll see that Counsel Tuttle made the motion to approve.
I'll take the second, we, you can give it to uh Counsel Tuttle since uh he's made the effort to be here this evening, he can.
All right, I'm sorry that it's hard for you, I'm just coming up from reading. So Counsel Tuttle has the motion, Counselor Stackpole has the second. Does the coun- council want to discuss this?
The, the only comment I would make is that uh, you know, this is the first step uh in declaring this a dangerous building uh to hold the owner's feet to the fire, to uh begin to clean it up and maintain the building. Uh, it's my hope that uh the building can be rehabilitated uh and uh become a, a positive uh building within, within the community, that, that we don't have to get to the point where uh it, it becomes a wreck and has to be dismantled or something. So I hope the owners step up and see this as the first step, uh improve the, the uh situation with the building and um it becomes a productive piece of property once again in Sanford.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Are there any other counselors that'd like to make a comment? I see Counsel Martell.
Yes, I'd like to mostly mirror of uh Stackpole's um comments. I, you know, it, it, it looks like it, it was, the point was a nice building, and um it doesn't look like it's too far gone for repairs, and I'm hoping that it can be fixed up and, and the owner steps up or, or a new owner can, can step in and, and fix it up, so um I hope that this is a positive outcome.
Thank you, Counsel Martell. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counsel Martell?
Yes.
Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
Counsel Tuttle?
Yes.
Counsel Stackpole?
Yes.
Counsel Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Okay, one down. Uh, twenty-one dash two-four-three dash zero-one. This hearing is to determine whether twenty-eight Emery Street, Sanford, identified as Tax Map J thirty-one, Lot three, and further described in the deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Books one six nine four seven, page seven ninety, and mortgage recorded at Books one seven two two one, page nine six three, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen M R S A Chapters twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and determine what if any remedy is appropriate. Notice of this hearing was duly served on the parties in interest advertised in the newspaper on April twenty-third, thirtieth and May seventh as required by law, when an owner or party in interest is unknown or is not certain, ascertain- I'm having a difficult time with that word. ascertainable, ascertainable with reasonable diligence. Too many big words here. The owner could not be located. Parties in interest did not communicate to the City of Sanford prior to the hearing that they intended to be present and tell city presentation. Ian, it's yours.
Thank you. Um, I have um a photo up. Um, this is twenty-eight Emery Street. Uh, you can see the note pre- trespassing sign. Again, this is a property that the city secured. Uh, it has some similarities to the last um property uh we were discussing. Um, in this case, as, as you just said, um, we could not find the owner. Um, so that's why it was advertised in the newspaper uh on three occasions. Um, we did as much due diligence as we can, um, we, we couldn't locate them. Um, we even checked the death rolls, um, and uh it couldn't, couldn't find a, a, a death certificate. Uh, just gonna step back here for a second. Um, this is the property, it's, it's roughly the corner of Emery Street um and School Street, uh one block in. Um, and um, the, the property um is just a normal, normal lot. Uh, you, you wouldn't uh, you wouldn't believe the conditions um that, that the property uh has, has been in um for a substantial amount of time. Um, going back to the pictures, you can see um boarding. Um, this is what the city did. Um, all these windows are broken. Um, they're, they, they were broken into on multiple occasions. Uh, there was no do- uh lock. Um, I placed that lock there. Um, again, this is in um cooperation with the Police Department of uh, of multiple uh police calls as well. Um, behind the house, um, there is a, a, a massive pile of uh, of household waste. Um, th- this is um been um deposited here over a, a, a fair amount of time. It's my understanding, um, I was uh too wimpy to venture in, but in that shed, someone's been living in there for um um a substantial amount of time. So um, this smells. Um, this is uh just the absolute of unsanitary. Um, there's uh, I don't know where uh this stuff came from. Um, looking in through the windows, um, the, the refuge is, is, is just about as deep. Um, we, we haven't ventured inside, um, but uh, that, that, that's uh also, also in there. Um, some additional pictures, you can, you can see the broken windows again here, um, the shed. Uh, there's actually um, uh modifications to the electrical system here. Um, they, they, they ran electrical cable um into the shed. Um, I had the power um disconnected um, uh because uh just uh, there, there was a high risk of electrical fire. Um, other pictures of the debris uh in the background, you can see that we've uh posted um the building, no trespassing, um barricaded um the, the uh, the garage. Um, this has subsequently been uh cleaned out. Um, um, you can see um open windows, um broken windows, um, and um the uh, on this side of the building, uh, some, some uh chair, um other broken windows, broken windows throughout. Um, we posted it um as well. Um, other broken windows on s- this side of the house. Um, the, again, as I said, there's uh looking in the windows, opening the door. Um, you, you really can't move around inside, it's, it's so, it's so thick. Um, you can obviously see the broken window here. Um, and um, so far the, the boarding has been successful. Um, all, you'll see um the notification to uh the, the Property Maintenance Company to do further boarding. Um, they have not, not complied at this. Um, then um, some other pictures of the, of the rear of the building, um, other, other pictures of the pile of waste. This is how it looks um as of uh, as of March um fifteenth, and we have it cleaned out. Um, and I'll, and I'll explain that in a, in a little bit again, um, but had all the debris uh removed um under, under this uh, um, the, the notice of securing. Um, so just to leave you at that, that's um, that's the way um, it seems to be that you find it. Uh, the police have continued to check on it, um, make sure there's no one inside.
Right, Ian, Ian, excuse me, the, the inside, the, the inside of the house hasn't been cleaned out, just, just the outside.
That's correct. I, 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 I'll, I'll elaborate that, I'll elaborate on that for you, um, Counselor Stackpole. Um, um, vision, um, the uh, the uh Property Tax Code, again, um, um, this was purchased from Paul Cormier. Um, um, Stephen McIntosh um bought it um in two thousand seven, um, for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Um, an A-line Mayo, looks like he joined up with um, um that individual. Um, later in two thousand seven, and then it became um Stephen McIntosh, uh again, um sole owner in two thousand fourteen. Um, the assessed values, um, a hundred and ten thousand. Um, and then, as I mentioned previously, uh a good check, um, is this has been depreciated at forty percent. I think um, you know, uh, that was the picture of um its depreciated value or, or at, at some point in the past back in two thousand seven. Um, but I assume with um its current state, um, it's, it's probably uh, uh less valued. Um, these are the deeds, um, just showing um Mr. McIntosh's uh ownership of this. Um, the, the joining with A-line um Mayo, um, and then um, um just back to Mr. McIntosh, unmarried man, so living at that address. Um, there was one single mortgage on this property. Um, it had an assignment, and then uh there was a um, a foreclosure certificate um filed in, in two thousand nineteen. Um, so um, that, that's the, the last known documentation. Again, um, uh, two years ago was the last action uh taken um by uh the party in interest, the mortgagee, uh to start a foreclosure process, uh but no, no, no further progress on that after.
Excuse me, Ian, just one second?
Yes.
Um, I see that Counsel Tuttle has his hand up. Do you have a question about what he just said, Counsel Tuttle, or do you wanna wait till he finishes his presentation?
I'm gonna wait, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ian.
Um, as far as uh notice and notice of the, the hearing, um, this is the uh notice of hearing as filed in the Registry of Deeds. Um, as I said, we weren't able to locate uh Stephen McIntosh, he's, he's obviously not at this property. Um, and um we were successful in noti- notifying uh Sunwise Mortgage Company. Um, here's the uh certificate um of, of receipt as well as um the uh signature page of the certified receipt. Um, it was also advertised in the Springvale News again, um, on the same days as the prior on um, 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 March uh twenty-third, um, March uh thirtieth, and then May uh seventh. Um, we did um secure the building, as I said, um, building is observed to be abandoned, neglected and dilapidated without property security. Uh, the doors to the building and shed were open, unlocked, unbroken, windows were broken, and there was a large pile of waste in the backyard. Um, the police have observed vagrants in the building. Um, the, the doors were locked and barred and posted against trespassing, um, and as a dangerous building. Um, the electricity was scheduled for disconnection, this is back um when this was carried out um in, in April. Um, since that time, it has been disconnected, and the pile of waste was scheduled for removal. Um, again, that, as you've seen those pictures showing that the waste was removed. Um, as, as far as um access um to the uh interior of the building, uh Counselor Stackpole, um, you know, until, until the order um expires, meaning as you, as you suggest, you know, you hope that this turns around, um, we have no um authority to enter the property. Um, we're allowed to, to do things to secure the property, uh to make it immediately safe. Um, but taking such steps as potentially cleaning it out, um, depending on the property um require um a lot more um effort and actually patience um uh to wait. And it's something that the Land Bank um Commission uh does deliberate and occasionally um take on. Um, what really helps is when you have a willing party, uh because uh the mortgage companies are also in the same boat, they're also not allowed to go into the property. Um, so um sometimes um it's, it's helpful um that we work um together if, for example, the owner is missing or the owner has died, um, and there is the potential to salvage the property. Um, so we, we, like you said, we, we always hope that we can turn these buildings around, um, but um it's, it's sometimes not always possible.
Just one, one more quick question, Ian. Uh, was somebody paying the electric bill? You know?
Um, um, so the, the electric bill is actually the most um obtuse information to collect. Um, but, but I, I'll, I'll give, make, let you know about that too, um, when I, when I get back to that.
Okay, alright.
Um, city correspondences, um, um, Aaron um has been um really on top of this property. Um, just a, just a, a number of uh neighbor complaints, and so um, thank you, thank you very much, um, um, Aaron. Um, this is uh again, uh up here is how it was delivered, regular and certified mail, and we tried for Stephen. There, there was someone in the building, um, so um Aaron went so far as to notify that, um, feel free to ask him about that. Um, and um also to the Property Maintenance Company. Um, there's the, he, he cited the accumulation of rubbish under three oh eight uh point one of the Property Maintenance Code. Um, I mean, this has been like this um, uh since May twenty twenty. So, so a full year, um, the neighbors uh have been, have been dealing um with uh, with the issues um taking place um at this property. Um, that was the first um notice. Anything you wanna add to that, um, Aaron, or it's not necessar- necessary at this time, but um?
Um, no, uh, the, the follow-up with that was uh the individual living at the property would continue to bring uh some of that debris on our follow-up inspections, they would bring that debris inside of the house where I didn't obviously uh go in uh to try to hide that according to the neighbors, that was the, they said, that then they would, as soon as we would leave, they would continue to bring it, some of it back out or bring more on to the property. So i- it was a, a true battle for getting compliance there.
Um, again, um, like I said, Aaron's been on top of this, attempting to resolve it in Febu- I'm sorry. Um, again, um, like I said, Aaron's been on top of this, attempting to resolve it in February, I'm sorry, in uh September uh twenty-twenty. Again, Aaron is reaching out um and attempting to resolve these um trash and, and garbage again, three oh eight point one in the property maintenance code. Now, um, dealing with broken windows as well, uh, uh, three oh four uh thirteen-one. Um, trying to deal with this as well, um, Aaron is then um asking um again another notice of violation in March um twenty-twenty-one. Um, this is um now, um, let's see, uh, section three oh three thirteen-one. Um, further windows broken. Um. Um, it's, it's pretty obvious that this is um in a state where um it's not the owner um that's present here. Uh, needs to get a vacant building license. Um, and then as well, um additional um debris and broken gar- uh glass under three oh four point one. Um. Uh, see. Then um there was an order to uh notice of violation again uh March seventh. Uh, now it's lack of water. Um, the uh, the water was uh, uh, we were unaware, but it was turned off in November of twenty-twenty. Um, so um when, when we became aware of that, um, Aaron um um made that a violation notice, so one oh eight point one point three. Um, there, there is uh quite a stink um coming from that, that building. Um, and then one oh eight point five, um, the property's been condemned and black-carded. Um, as far as the um, the reports that we get, um, we work closely with the Water and Sewer District um in Sanford. Um, that's where we found out about the uh, the water being off since November twenty, and it had a past due balance of five hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. Um, as far as the electricity record, um, we actually can't access that record from uh Central Main Power. Um, I, I maintain that that's a public record, um, but um uh Central Main Power disagrees. Um. Police reports, um, I counted um or conservatively counted um uh seven instances of, of trespassing um on this property between um on um seven instances in two, twenty-twenty-one of trespassing, um, along with um other, other issues um taking place. Um, and then uh, and finally, um, there, as far as the clean-out went, um, that was uh, that was just about ten tons of, of household um debris uh was, that was taken out of the back of that property. So none, uh, we, we took what we could, um, that was reclaimable as junk. Uh, but the rest of that really was uh household waste um that, that had accumulated. Um, and we don't know um whether that was the owner or, or simply just someone um there. So nine point eight-eight tons. Um. Anything else I'm forgetting here, Aaron? Um, as far as the uh, um, at this point, the, the, the property is, is, is uh, is similar. Um, it meets that criteria of unsafe. Um, it's, it's awkwardly put there at the beginning. I can't attest to whether the building is structurally unstable. Um, I don't believe it is. It's obviously unsanitary. Um, I think that's the, the largest pile of household waste I've ever seen, and the smell is, was overwhelming. Um, it's a fire hazard, but uh just the simple fact of the illegal wiring taking place uh makes it um so. Um, it's, it's improper um to, to the occupancy to which it's put with no water. It's not really a place to live, um, but it's been used as um a place where um people may. Um, and as a matter of fact, that, that shed in the backyard was actually being used as a bedroom um or, or a place to sleep. So um that, that's a problem um all to itself. Um, all those constitute that unsafeness, that unsanitariness and, and fire hazard. Um, it's um, it's inadequately maintained, inadequately, inadequately cared for. Um, dilapidated, it doesn't have a, um, I, I don't think there's a single um window on, on three sides of that building that's not broken. Um, and it's uh obviously abandoned. Um, as, as there's no one living in it now, we can't find the owner. Um, and um, there, there's no electricity at this point. Um, and no water. Um, the building was wide open when we found it. Um, and um, um, piles of trash. Um, so is it, is it un, is it dangerous to life and property on, on, on both end, you know, both sides? Yes, um, it just, the, the, the household trash is uh, is uh just completely unsanitary enough that I don't, I think that that could make someone extremely sick um to be in the presence of. Um, and uh living in those conditions, the possibility for a fire with the illegal wiring. Um, and then the close proximity to other buildings as well uh make it as well uh dangerous uh to the property itself, surrounding properties, the neighborhood as a whole, and an attractive nuisance and contributing to other um impacts to um the neighborhood.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Ian?
Yes.
I would like to know if, based on the amount of trash that was on the outside, that you're assuming that the same kind of trash is on the ins-
I, I am assuming that the same kind of trash um is on the inside. That, that's speculation. I, I've, I've seen some, um, you know, through the windows and, and opening the doors um of, of what's occurring inside. Um, but, but that's uh, that, yeah.
Well, if the owner or whoever was occu- and there is no one in the building currently.
There's no one in the building currently.
Okay. Um, uh, Councillor Tut- do you want us to hear from the um owner response before I allow other questions? Or is it okay if councillors ask a couple of questions?
Well, no, I'd like to hear if the owner's here, I'd like to find out what's going on.
You'd like to hear that first, okay. Alright, so um the owner's response, and I see Carrie Folsom's hand up.
Yes, um, is it alright if I start my video?
Please do.
Here we go. Did it work? Can you see me?
Okay.
Um, I'm not the owner, I'm the attorney for Sunwest Mortgage, and we're also the attorney representing the plaintiff in the foreclosure action. Um, I'll give you some information that might fill in some of the gaps um on what we were just talking about. This is a VA loan, and um the foreclosure was started at the end of twenty-nineteen. And um the owner tried mediation to see if there were any um solutions for him, and there weren't any. He's an older gentleman, um, hoarding issues from what I understand. And um, but then, everybody cannot forget, uh, COVID hits in March, and because this is a VA loan, the CARES Act went into place. And even for vacant properties, um, the lenders were allowed to do nothing with the property. And it's our understanding that just before COVID hit, at the beginning of March, is when Mr. McIntosh moved out. We do know where he is, he lives with his grown daughter in Massachusetts. Um, and unfortunately, even for vacant properties, uh, the VA would not allow us to proceed with the foreclosure. Um, and you combine that with the fact that the court was closed for the first several months after COVID, and then they had um what they called their pandemic management orders and phased reopening plans. Um, and basically, cases were being heard slowly, slowly, and the last cases to be allowed to be heard uh were foreclosures, and that was as of March first. Um, they could schedule foreclosures, so literally an entire year passed where we were stuck between a rock and a hard place. Uh, a VA loan, we couldn't proceed because of CARES Act, and the court wasn't hearing any foreclosures. And here we are, the middle of May, and the only courts that have set any foreclosures are in Arustic County. So um we actually were able to work with the borrower, and we got a consented judgment with him um just a few weeks ago in the end of March. So uh my client is actually ready to go to sale. Um, a couple of other bits I can add in. Um, the statute um changed regarding servicers and lenders' abilities to enter property uh in Title fourteen sixty-three twenty-seven. And unfortunately, it was to protect homeowners from overzealous property preservation companies, but what it's done is the pendulum has swung the other way, and the property preservation companies are totally fearful of doing anything until we can file an affidavit with the court. But because of the CARES Act, because it was VA, they couldn't go in, they couldn't get the affidavit. They finally got one a couple of weeks ago, and they filed it with the court. And finally, um, the bank has been able to proceed, lifted the CARES Act moratorium as a non-occupied property. The affidavit was filed, um, my client's property preservation team was at the property today um doing inspections, and their plan is to have a remediation plan in place within fourteen days. Um, so unfortunately, my client's hands were tied for a long time, and you'll, I don't know anything about that other property we were just talking about, the eighteen Winter Street. But that's why foreclosures, um, I have a foreclosure pending now, it's been open since twenty-twelve. Um, that's why foreclosures are just stuck. Nothing's moving. Um, and there's going to be such a significant backlog if you can't get an agreed judgment. Um, it's been almost seventeen months now since the foreclosure hearing has been heard. So um we're hoping to remediate this property. Um, it is our understanding that uh Mr. McIntosh was an elderly gentleman, and he had a hoarding problem. Hence, my clients aren't aware of the inside condition of the property either, but I surmise there's probably a lot in there as well. But the property pres- votes are going to be on the property today, they were going out this afternoon.
Thank you. Ms. Folsom. Ian?
Yes.
Um, is that um news to you? Or?
That, that is news to me, and, and actually, I really appreciate um Ms. Folsom's um uh help in, in explaining um the, the situation. I, I think it's really unfortunate um that these issues end up falling upon the, the community. Um, you know, and, and that, that's partly the reason why we have the vacant building license in effect. Um, and additionally, why we're here talking about this. Because, you know, now that we're able to make this connection, um, you know, we can, you know, I, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that they'll be, be submitting a rehabilitation um plan. Um, and um hopefully, we can get this resolved. So um the Land Bank does have some resources um to, to help in these situations, and, and that's why um the City Council put it into effect a number of years ago in, in, in helping to resolve these situations. I, it's so unfortunate that these properties sit in a foreclosed state, in an abandoned state. Uh, I'm hearing, you know, in this case, twenty uh, 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 since two thousand and twelve, um, you know, we've been dealing with over the years, properties that have been sitting since uh two thousand and eight um in, in the community without any res- resolution whatsoever. Uh, that, that's completely unfair um to the um, to the community. And uh, but I, I'd say I'm, I'm not putting that on you, um, um, Ms. Folsom. It's, it's, I appreciate your insight there, and I appreciate you coming to the hearing tonight.
Um, Councillor Tuttle has a question?
No, Madam Mayor, I, I've just been aware of the situation for a number of years, a number of the residents had called me. Um, I, I realize it had been elderly gentleman, my understanding is that his wife had passed away, and there had been a daughter involved, as uh the attorney uh has said, but it's really become an eyesore for our community, for the neighbors in the area. And I, I would like to, you know, it, it's too bad these things take so long. But I think we're probably, the information that we've received tonight will be helpful. And any way the attorney can help expedite this process in the betterment of her client and for our community would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Councillor Tuttle. And can I just ask a question before I ask? I, I, I recognize the next councillor. Um, Ian, this definitely though gives us the ability to know that what we're doing tonight will, to be able to make sure that there is follow-through on, on the be, on, on the part of the owner, correct?
That's right. That's what this does. That, that's, this is how, as uh Councillor Stackpole works, this is this, this exit ramp um that, that, that we hope for um every time we, we do one of these.
And it gives us the opportunity to keep an eye on that so that we make sure that it actually happens, correct?
That's right. And also recoup our cost. I mean, that was the, we're dealing with the-
Councillor Martell has his hand up. And congratulations, Councillor Martell. Excellent job.
I'm sorry?
With your hand. I'm really impressed.
Now that I was able to find the button, they hide it. Um, so in, in light of the, the new um information here, does this need to move forward under this um dangerous building process? Or are we able to kind of pull this back and, and work with um the mortgage company and the remediation company? How does, how does that sort of work in this sort of situation?
My recommendation to you is, is you continue with your hearing. This is information that you're receiving from a party of interest. But the point here is to hold um everybody feet to the fire on this and, and make sure um all parties uh follow up, um, protect the interest of the city, um, and protect the interest of uh the community in doing so. Um, you've gotten it this far. Um, so it, it's uh in my mind, um, obviously dangerous from the simple uh perspective. It's uh, if, if it's so unsanitary and so insecure. Um, but um it's, it's for the City Council uh to review and decide.
So, okay, but if, if I just, if I can help-
Wait, wait, just wait a minute, because I see another hand up. Um, first, if you want to speak, that's fine, but I did see the owner wanting to speak, so um, Ms. Folsom, do you want to represent it?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I, I neglected to mention exactly where the foreclosure is at, um, which will um bear into things a little bit. I think um the, we have an agreed judgment that was docketed on March five. Um, there's a statutory ninety-day post-judgment waiting period, which will expire approximately uh June five, and we'd be ready to um set a sale date um minimum thirty days out after publication. So our client is very motivated to try and get some repairs done, because they could be at auction before um the middle of July and sell it to a purchaser.
Thank you, Ms. Folsom. Um, Councillor Stackpole, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna try to help Jonathan out a little bit. Um, because what, what we're doing, Jonathan, is uh likely we'll declare this uh a dangerous building, and uh Ian can get into the specifics of, but that holds the, the owner uh accountable to remediate the dangerous aspect of the building. And they have uh thirty days uh to come up with a plan to um uh assist in, in getting this, getting this building uh restoring it to being a safe building within the, within the community. That's, that's all that this does. Uh, as the attorneys mentioned, they, they plan to have something going in fourteen days. So they're actually ahead of what we're trying to do. But by the council declaring this a dangerous building, it holds everybody's feet to the fire, which is a term that's been used, to make sure there's follow-through. And if there isn't follow-through on addressing the dangerous aspect of the building, then there are consequences. So uh that, that's really what we're doing here um in the process right now. Uh, so I definitely, as has been said, I, I think it's something we need to follow through on.
Okay, thank you.
For that, Councillor Stackpole, that was an excellent explanation. Okay, any other, Ms. Folsom, you still have your hand up? Is that just a leftover?
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's a leftover, let me-
Nope, just didn't want to ignore it.
Nope, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Either uh-
Like Steve's got his hand up.
Steve.
Steve, no.
I just wanted to add, as, as, as the person that's responsible for reviewing the uh remediation plans, I'm very pleased to see the, the owner representative here, uh, Ernie Folsom. Thank you very much for attending this evening. There's every appearance that there will be uh, uh-
There's every appearance that there will be uh a very acceptable remediation plan with a very acceptable timeline put forward on this property. It's great news to have representation here in in that regard. Uh, so assuming that that uh i- is the case, I would see uh daylight on this particular property for the owner representative to take appropriate action on the property, bring that all the all the way forward to a perfected sale, so.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. Um, I see Zandell, there's no other counselors with questions, correct? Zandell Bouchard?
Hey, I have a quick question. Um, if if the building is declared to be a dangerous building and then the property owner or the mortgage mortgage company does things to fix it up, is there a process that has to be gone through to declare it no longer dangerous?
Um, I will let Ian answer the question of the, you're asking a process question about in general, about what happens to a building.
Right.
When it's declared dangerous. Ian, do you want to answer that question?
Yes, um, I can, actually, I'm gonna follow up with it, but.
Okay, go ahead.
With with what um um Stephen Buck, the city manager, said. Um, the typical order, um, i- it it talks about submitting a rehabilitation plan to the city manager. Um, and it talks about carrying out that rehabilitation plan. Um, these are actually um quite common um in these dangerous building um processes, or we like to see them as common. These are the best outcomes um when 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 um building rather than sitting is is returned back into into productive um use. So, um, tha- that's what I was describing as that that exit ramp um as well. Um, so, uh, yes, um, submit a rehabilitation plan uh to the city manager, carry out what you said you were going to do. Um, hopefully, perfect that sale, um, the end, um, and um and uh dangerous building is um gone.
Okay, thank you.
Feel free, Zandell, to um, you know, contact Ian tomorrow if you need further questions to write the article. I understand what you're, okay, we're gonna continue. So are there any other questions in this hearing process? Seeing none, then I'm going to declare the hearing closed and go on to twenty-one dash two four four dash zero one. Based on the testimony and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attests the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the owner has owned the building, the property, since two thousand seven. B, the building is abandoned, as evidenced by no water service to the building since November twenty twenty and therefore no habitable occupancy since that time. Doors and windows are broken, left unlocked, open and missing, and generally unsecure, therefore inviting to trespassers and vandals. Personal property and furnishings indicating habitable occupancy are absent from the property and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally described as junk, debris, and household trash, is a fire hazard and is unsanitary. Mortgagee-initiated foreclosure proceeding since September two thousand nineteen and has taken steps to position step, take possession of the property but has not completed that process. Vandalism and other illegal acts were committed on the premises. Electrical power has been turned off to secure the property. Inspections on May fourteenth, twenty twenty, November sixteenth, um, twenty twenty, March sixth, twelfth, twenty twenty, and April seventh, twenty twenty-one found violations of City Code Chapter ninety dash one three B five, two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Accumulation of rubbish and garbage, broken windows, exterior debris and broken glass, lack of water service prohibited against occupants. D, reports of trespassing were followed up upon by the police in seven instances in twenty twenty-one and other illegal acts being committed on the premises have been made to local law enforcement agencies. Building was secured pursuant to seventeen MRSA Chapter twenty-eight fifty-six and posted no trespassing on April ninth, twenty twenty-one with notice recorded in the Registry of Deeds at Book one eight six four seven, page one eleven. Electricity was turned off to avert fire due to improper wiring observed while securing the building. And nine point eight eight tons of household waste was removed from the exterior of the property as had accumulated. Based on the foregoing findings, it is adjudged that twenty-eight Emery Street tax map J thirty-one lot three is a dangerous building and nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA Chapters twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine because the building is unsafe and unsanitary. Constitutes a fire hazard, is improper for the occupancy to which it is put, constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, and abandonment, and is otherwise dangerous to life and property because of the abandoned building. And unmanaged and uncared for condition of the property contributes to blight. Acts as an attractive nuisance for vandalism and other illegal acts, all of which also negatively impact the property value, health, safety, and welfare of surrounding properties and their occupants and their well-being. But I have a motion to prove the above.
Go move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call a roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent with notice, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also, yes, that is unanimous of all those persons. Okay, and thank you, um, Ms. Folsom, for being here tonight. Okay, next item. Twenty-one dash two four five dash zero one. This hearing is to de- is to determine whether thirty-seven Montreal Street, Stanford, identified as tax map H twenty-seven lot ten and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book one seven seven zero two, page fifty, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen MRSA Chapters twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. Notice of this hearing was duly served on the owner's advice in the newspaper. On at April twenty-third, thirty, and May seventh, as required by law when an owner or party in interest is unknown or is not ascertainable with reasonable diligence. In addition, notice of the option to participate in this hearing was communicated to the owner by email. Parties in interest did not communicate to the city of Stanford prior to the hearing that they intended to be present and testify at the city presentation. Ian, it's yours.
The uh the property's on Montreal Street. Um, it's between June um and uh Saint Louis, Saint Louise. Um, and um it's it's this lot here. It's uh the property itself, um, you can see from this two thousand seventeen uh photo, uh, number of large driveway, shed, um, building. This is a four-unit building. Um, uh, Jeannie, are you able to uh turn your camera on um for for the hearing? Thank you. Um, and um Jeannie Wood, um, code enforcement officer, will help um um through this. Um, I am going to, I started running through some of the photographs, we've been doing this. Um, I mean, you can see the four units, A, B, C, and D. Um, propane tanks on the back side here, um, number of meters. Um, the these are still operational. Um, a fair amount of uh trash and debris on the front yard. These were um uh taken on March, um, these photos were taken on March fourth. Nothing has been has changed um um until this week even. Um, that 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 debris is is still there. Um. Uh, just generally, um, this property, you can see this condemned uh notice on on unit unit A. Um, just some plastic bags here. Um, here's close-up pictures of the trash and debris that are there on along Montreal. Um, just generally the way that this building looks. Um, here's the other side, again, tires up against the side of the building, um, some some vines, some um, you know, broken broken shades um on the first floor, second floor, trash around. Um, it's a, you know, leaning leaning porches. Um, this is a uh a pile of household uh trash uh covered by a uh vehicle topper. Um, it it smells quite a lot. Um, you, uh, we talked about how we use the notice securing here, we we didn't use it in this situation. Uh, it it wasn't, didn't didn't appear to be uh necessary. Um, Jeannie, these are uh photos, I think, from uh a year ago at least, right? I mean, these are some of the vehicles that were were parked along here. So, do you do you know the date off the top of your head for these?
I I don't know off the top of my head. Um, it was one of the notices I sent, I believe it was from a year ago, February of last year.
Thank you. Come back to that. So you can see some of the steps, uh, broken steps. Um, I don't I didn't think I noticed that recently, but uh the the variety of trash that's up here. Um, I think you were brought to this property for a tenant complaint, if I remember correctly. Um, this was uh the conditions on inside one of the units.
That's correct.
Um, just a, look like a lot of household trash just strewn about. Um, kitchen, I believe those are, there are flies on the wall, um, some kind of flies. Um, just a variety of uncleanly situations, open food. Um, yep, uh, either ants or or other um flies um inside. Wow, that's a, that's that's quite the the this, the 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 household trash. Um, quite the pile.
Ian, can I ask a question? Was that, were were you there because you they were getting the rental license?
Um, let's let's see um where we're at with, uh, can I just defer to that?
You can, I was just curious how it happened to be in the building.
Yeah, well, well, let's see if we can answer that for you in a minute. Um, and then it looks like uh just trash just strewn out onto the onto the road as as well. I mean, and these are the pictures that I took recently from the from the other sides uh of the building. You can you can see some the the trim peeling. Um, I think uh generally, we're we're talking about uncleanliness and a a variety of uh other issues. Uh, pictures of the meters um showing that they're still active and and operating. But uh, let's see if we, let's see what we can figure out here. Um, so the ownership documents, um, it's owned by uh Heather and Mitchell Piper. Uh, they bought it in two thousand eighteen for two hundred and fifty-five thousand from uh Two Trees Development LLC. Um, the property's valued at uh two hundred and twenty-four thousand, uh, two hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred. Um, it's it's depreciated at twenty-four percent. So, um, the it only twenty-five percent loss of value there, um, according to the assessing records. Um, there there's only um one deed, there's no mortgage on this property. Um, that's what I just uh went through with the sale there. Um, the owner um seems to 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 live in 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 the area, in Kennybunk. Um. Um, here's the documentation of notice, it was, here's the notice of hearing. Um, it only went to one party, Heather and uh and uh Mitchell Piper. Um, this is the recording in the Registry of Deeds. Um, this was uh, this is signed uh in person um by by Heather Piper um uh of of acknowledgement and receipt of the notice of hearing. Um, and um I additionally confirmed um with with Heather, well, excuse me, I additionally sent a uh email um to uh Ms. Piper informing her of of how she could access um the meeting. Um, I did not receive a response. I I also did copied um the the notices and and uh at letting her know that um she she'd e- accepted um the notice as well. Um, this was additionally advertised in the in this uh Sanford-Springvale News on um on March uh twenty-third, thirtieth, uh, and April seventh. Um, and then it's uh to your question, uh, Mayor Mistracchio, um, the city's correspondents is here. Um, I think this is showing, and 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 Jeannie, you can help me out here. Um, looked like it had a a rental license in in two thousand nineteen. Um, so if they owned it in two thousand eighteen, it um, this is the first time, right? For for um and and um, is it the first and the last time that they obtained a license?
Ian, um, they did obtain a license in two thousand eighteen. Um, it was pretty late after the the due date. And then again, here, they did obtain one in two thousand nineteen, that was in August, uh, and that was about eight months late.
Okay. So, um, they're 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 really two years behind. So we're really talking about uh twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one as well. That's correct, yeah. See you nodding your head. Um, it sounds like, uh, to answer your question, how did you end up, uh, Mayor Mistracchio, how did you, how did uh code enforcement officer end up there? Um, on March first, twenty twenty, really a year ago. Um, Jeannie, you you said that, um, did you explain how you how you ended up there?
Yes, uh, the tenant called me um complaining about bedbugs in her unit. Um, I did not enter the unit, I stood in the doorway and took the pictures, there was just no way I was going in there.
So it seems to be that you observed uh unsanitary conditions, it looks like it was unit D. Um, so um, really, that's uh structure unfit for um occupancy as far as uh probably uncleanliness. I s- uh, yeah, uncleanliness and unsanitariness. That's a violation of uh Property Maintenance Code, Section one oh eight, uh, one point three. Um, I didn't see any pictures, but it sounds like there was also an overflowing dumpster. Um, I can I can say that I saw that pile of um household waste um uh as well on that on that trailer there. I don't know if that had changed or if that was a different pile of waste on the trailer. But an overflowing dumpster and and trash on the upstairs deck, I remember seeing those pictures that that you provided. And that seems to be a violation, well, that that is a violation of uh the Property Maintenance Code, Section three oh eight point. Accurate to you or anything you want to add to the unsanitary conditions?
Uh, no, you covered it.
Okay. Um, I think this is what this means at the time to, um, because of the unsanitary conditions you posted against occupancy, um, that this is your, this is your order to vacate. Um, I do remember having a conversation with the Land Bank Commission about this as well, letting them know that this had taken place. Um, which is the process, so this is the order to vacate. Then, um, on May nineteenth, twenty twenty, you 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 were back. Um, that, uh, and and you're, it seems like you're notifying the the Pipers um at at multiple addresses, trying to get their attention to the matter?
Yes, I um Googled their names and sent them to as many address, sent the notices to as many addresses as I could find.
And um, it looks to be, um, again, just just in attention to maintenance of of the property, no care, no lack of care um regarding the property. You're citing at this time, trash in the driveway, Section three oh eight point one. Uh, disabled and unregistered motor vehicle, I saw that picture of that, um, a truck with the, I think it was an axle in the back. Um, and um, that's Section three oh two point eight. And then uh you're you're pointing out that um they're they're, in in twenty twenty, they're behind at that point on a rental license.
Yes, for twenty twenty, and I, that uh was based on a neighbor's complaint. That's how I ended up up there that day.
Okay, so it sounds like there's some spillover effect here, it's really impacting the the neighborhood with the smells and the.
I've had multiple calls on that property.
Yeah. Um, and then uh now, I think in June twenty, uh, in in June of twenty twenty, just a couple of months later, guessing in this case, so you can confirm with me, is is uh you're not getting any response from the owner. You know, that this this condition's continuing and you're trying to resolve this. It it seems like there's someone living in in apartment A, um, and and you're reaching out to them. I think is um that that the the way you're up to here is uh.
Yeah, so it, at the time that I vacated apartment D, apartments B and C were vacant. So I prohibited. So I prohibited them, them from occupancy because there was no rental license. However, Apartment A was occupied at the time, and I was unable to gain access to determine the condition of that unit. So in 2020, when the owner did not license this property as a rental, I reached out to that tenant directly to let them know that they were occupying an unlicensed rental.
And then here's another notice of violation. This, this is a couple of months later, that's in August of 2020, you're reaching out again. Sounds like you've been able to contact the Pipers because you're only contacting them at one PO box now. And then again, you're notifying them that they're in violation of, they have found their rental license. And I'm sure the issues that you've previously citing are persisting. They continue to this day.
Right.
Then again, in, in October, you're reaching out. Looks like trying again to the multiple addresses, probably because you didn't receive a response that prior time.
Did you guys figure out their physical address?
Well, Jeannie, do you-
Because I figured it out through the conversation.
So I, I don't think we know where they reside, but where her workplace is.
I, I actually figured out where they reside. If you, I'll send someone the address.
I do believe, I do believe Ms. Piper is on the line tonight. She emailed me indicating that she would be.
Oh, good.
It wasn't that hard, it wasn't that hard, you can see.
And then in October, you reached out again, again, to notify the lack of license. And then in this case, you're reaching out in March of 2021 for lack of water service. No water. And let's see, the water was turned off in, in March, 2021. If I remember correctly, the water department notified us that this property had lacked, had lacked water service. Was there something else that they had notified us about? Some, some other condition that, that rose to that level of being specific?
They did not. So at that point, that the water service was shut off, I did have to vacate Unit A, even though I had never gained entrance. It did appear to me when I went to post it, that they had already vacated. However, I did find somebody living in one of the apartments out back that had already been posted against occupancy. So I reposted it that and told the guy that was living there that he would need to, to find somewhere else to live. And he indicated to me that he had never spoken with the owner, didn't know who it was, didn't know how to contact them.
So how'd he pay his rent?
He didn't.
Oh, he just lived there.
He just lived there.
Yeah, that might be part of the problem. People not paying rent.
So this is the order to vacate that you're, that you're talking about, along with the posting of the property that, that you just mentioned.
Exactly, yes.
As far as the utility reports go, so like I just mentioned, the, the water's been off since March. From the water perspective, there's, there's no balance due. From the sewer perspective, there are two sewer liens for 20 and, and 21. So from that perspective, the, the property's two years in arrears on, with, with, with encumbrances of liens against the property by the sewer department with one thousand six hundred twelve dollars and eight cents owing. Electricity's on, there's, there's lights on during the day. There's no cars around. So not quite sure whether anybody lives there or not. As Counselor Stack will ask, is there any way to figure that out? And the answer is no, unfortunately. And then from the property tax perspective, there's eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety cents owing with two liens on the property as well. So that, that's an issue. The police calls on this property are, are just different than the other ones. There, there aren't reports of trespassing. Looks like in 2019, the ones that jumped out to me were disturbances, animal complaints, domestic disturbances, terrorizing and threatening. And it looked like in the early months of 2019, a, a number of noise complaints made against the property. I think, I'm just, just going to review here. Variety of junk and debris. It's, it's generally unsanitary, which makes it unsafe. It is insecure. I, you know, when I was there, I, I, one of the doors was, was open. I try to just, just close it as far as I'll, I'll go on those things. But I, I couldn't tell whether anybody lived there just because some of the lights were on, but no one was home. It's, it's a little difficult to, to say whether it's abandoned or not. As, as there, there seems to be individuals that should be the owners. However, they're, they're not paying property taxes. They, they're, they're letting the building go. So Counselor Martel mentioned, there's, they're not collecting the rent. They're not maintaining the property. They're not caring for the property. It, it doesn't quite, it doesn't quite add up, is, is what it, it doesn't do. And it doesn't tell a complete story. I would, I would err that, from that perspective, that, that it is abandoned. Because no one's tending to this property anymore. There's a general level of disinterest with it. And, and it clearly is spilling over into the neighboring properties. Not only were their complaints received from the occupants at one time, but there being, there are complaints made about the, the cleanliness of the property as well as its, as, as to how it's being used. If, if there's no water in a property, someone, someone can't be living there. Electricity is, is important to have. But without, without that water service, it's not a place that, that someone can live. So the story is incomplete. I, I'm not, I'm looking for the owner as far as being on the call. But I, I don't, I don't see anybody that I don't recognize on the list here. But we can wait to see if they, if they wanted to raise their hand, if, if they run under some other name. Otherwise, I'll, I'll take questions. I think, is there anything else to add as well, Jeannie, that I'm, that I'm missing?
I'll just say that from April of 2019 through April of this year, March of this year, so two years, after multiple notices sent, after multiple emails, multiple phone calls, we heard nothing from the property owners. Which then led us to, was one of the reasons that led us to getting this declared dangerous. I mean, it was our impression that it is an abandoned.
Seems like we lost Mayor Mistracchio here.
Yep, it's like she dropped him. I'm sure she'll try to get back on.
Okay.
So have we, I, I think you've-
We'll be fine, the, go ahead. Sorry, Counselor, Counselor Martel.
That's okay. While we're waiting for Mayor Mistracchio to come back on. I believe you had some correspondence or something that, that the owners had signed, is that correct?
That's right. They, they acknowledged receipt of this, this hearing. They knew that it was taking place. I reached out to e, by email. Code Enforcement Officer Wood, sounds like she also had a conversation with the owner just recently. And, and she said that she would attend this meeting to, to talk about it.
Okay. They did indicate that they would at least attempt to attend. Is that correct?
Yeah, she, she said she was on the line. I can, if you would like, I can read the email to you.
That would be, sure, go right ahead.
Okay. Dear Jeannie, I am at this meeting tonight, have been to Sanford Property Above over the last few weeks. I have a plan in place to our building back online properly. Apartments cleanouts this week and part of next week, evaluate and treat for pest control. Move to electrical and plumbing to make sure all is in working order with smoke detector repairs or improvements. Thank you, Heather Piper.
So, well, that's, that's encouraging. So it, it kind of puts us back in this, what sounds like a similar bucket to the last property where, you know, maybe we need a little bit of feet to the fire. But at least there's some response. Counselor Stackpole, do you have any thoughts on the situation?
Yeah, we, we find ourselves in these situations quite often. And the first step is always to, when we have a dangerous building, is to, again, vote to declare it a dangerous building. And that gives the, the city, gives us as a city council, the leverage to move ahead. You know, the, the owner has to come up with a plan. I know that Ian does an excellent job in working with property owners to, to manage that plan and is flexible in all the ways that he can possibly be to give the owner the opportunity to fix the building up. But if they don't, then we've, we've started the step moving things forward to take stronger action. And again, I leave that nebulous at this point. But it gives us the opportunity to follow through on the fact that we have a dangerous building. Needs to be remediated, needs to be fixed up. So definitely same situation as you mentioned last time. I think we, we need, my opinion, we need to vote to declare this a dangerous building and put the pressure firmly on the owner to remediate the situation.
Can I just interject, Ian? I'm sorry, but I was kicked off my internet again and lost it on my iPad. I'm back on my, I mean, on my, on my laptop, so I'm back on, on my iPad. Did I, I, I just want to make sure, are we in the process of, we heard the owner's response already and I missed it?
We were waiting, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, Jeannie read the owner's response, but Jeannie read what the owner was hoping to do and start doing to rehab the property.
Okay, so we have not heard from the owner then, correct?
Correct.
Only through an email of some sort, right? She's not, not leaving.
Okay, so-
She's not here.
She is not here, I thought that they said she was here.
No, she's not here right now.
Can, can you, Jeannie, can you clarify that that email was stating that she tried to call in or something and couldn't? And she sent the email in lieu of being able to speak to them at the meeting?
She just said, I am at this meeting tonight.
So she might be watching on television and not on Zoom, possibly?
Perhaps.
Perhaps, so she's not on a Zoom meeting at this time. But she, her, her commentary was read into the record by Jeannie.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay.
There were a number of questions as well, and very good questions.
We don't need to repeat them.
Nope.
No, no, that's fine.
And I think at this point, you know, it's, it's, you know, if you could ask more questions or move on?
I think we can move on to the, to the agenda item that deals with the, with the testimony and other evidence, right? I would do that one, Anne Marie.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't think, I, it took me just about three or four minutes to get the other computer open. So I'm going to go to twenty-one dash two four six dash zero one. Based on the testimony and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the city council, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the owner has owned the four dwelling unit building, the property, since 2018. B, there are two property tax liens encumbering the property with eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety cents owing and two sewer service liens encumbering the property with one thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and eight cents owing indicative of insufficient financial capacity or ability to care for or manage the property. C, the building is uncared for and evidently abandoned, as evidenced by no water service to the building since March 2021, and therefore no habitable occupancy since that time. Doors and windows are unsecure and the property is unmanaged and is therefore unsafe, also unsafe inviting to trespassers and vandals. Personal property and furnishings indicating habitable occupancy or absent from the property and any other personal property scattered in front of the property in the side yard is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junk, debris, and household trash. Is a fire hazard, is unsanitary and smells. Although the electricity remains on with interior lights obviously on during the day and with no care the property and no habitable occupancy, the property is unsafe and a fire hazard, left unsecure. D, inspections on February twenty-eight, twenty, twenty, May nineteen, twenty twenty, and then March fifth, twenty twenty-one, I found violations of, of City Code, Chapter ninety dash thirteen B five, 2015 International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Unsanitary conditions, Chapter one zero eight point one point three, overflowing dumpster, trash on upstairs deck. Excuse me, Chapter three oh eight point one, trash in driveway, Chapter three oh eight point one. Disabled and unregistered motor vehicle on the property, Chapter three oh two point eight, lack of water service to the building, Chapter one oh eight point one, point three. E, the property was ordered vacated on February twenty-eight, twenty twenty, and posted against occupancy because of its unsanitary condition. And again, ordered, vacated, and posted against occupancy on March fifth, twenty twenty-one because of lack of water source. At the time the property was ordered vacated in March twenty twenty-one, people present at the property indicated that they were moving and in prior postings against occupancy were no longer present on the property. F, reported disturbances and threatening in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty and other illegal acts being committed on the premises have been made to local law enforcement agencies. Based on the foregoing findings, it is adjudged that thirty-seven Montreal Street Tax Map H twenty-seven Lot ten is a dangerous building and nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA Chapters twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine. Because the building is unsafe and unsanitary constitutes fire hazard, is improper for the occupancy to which it is put, constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance and abandonment, and is otherwise dangerous to life and property because the abandoned building and unmanaged condition of the property is blight, acts as an attractive nuisance for vandalism and other illegal acts, all of which also negatively impact the property value, health, safety, and welfare of surrounding properties and their occupants and their well-being. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion for that.
Is there a sec-
Third.
All right, a motion by Counselor Hurley and a second by Counselor Tuttle. Any more discussion? Call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan? Absent with notice, sorry. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yeah.
And I am also, yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Okay, the last, I'm going to take the last three items as one order. And I will read it in its entirety and then ask for a motion. And I will read it in its entirety and then ask for a, um, motion, um, at the end. After hearing testimony and other evidence presented for eighteen Winter Street under Agenda Item twenty-one dash two four one dash zero one, twenty-eight Emory Street under Agenda Item twenty-one dash two four three dash zero one, and thirty-seven Montreal Street under Agenda Item twenty-one dash two four five dash zero one, and then making findings of fact and then a judging, eighteen Winter Street under Agenda Item twenty-one dash two four two dash zero one, twenty-eight Emory Street under Agenda Item twenty-one dash two four four dash zero one, and thirty-seven Montreal Street under Agenda Item twenty-one dash two four six dash zero one, to be a dangerous building and nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA Chapters twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, the city council makes the following orders to abate the nuisance and appropriate corrective actions taken. Order twenty-one dash two four seven dash zero one eighteen Winter Street, order twenty-one dash two four eight dash zero one twenty-eight Emory Street, order twenty-one dash two four nine dash zero one thirty-seven Montreal Street. It is ordered that to protect the health, safety and welfare, the property is to be immediately secured within twenty-four hours. And be it further ordered that to protect the health, safety and welfare, the nuisance is to be immediately abated by removing and disposing of any and all rubbish, debris, vehicles, equipment, household, human, hazardous waste and dangerous materials from the property. And be it further ordered if the owner or party in interest demonstrates the ability and willingness to satisfactorily rehabilitate the property by submitting and having a rehabilitation plan approved by the city manager within thirty days of reporting this order and carrying out such rehabilitation plan in a timely manner. Order to immediately abate the nuisance may be delayed. Such rehabilitation plan must include, at a minimum, all deficiencies listed as part of the findings of fact experienced and forth are corrected. The property is rehabilitated and brought into compliance with all applicable state and local codes and meets all permitting and inspection requirements. And there shall be no occupancy or use of the building until the property has been satisfactorily rehabilitated. And be it further ordered that the city clerk record this order in New York County Registry of Deeds and cause attested copies of this order to be served upon the person as required by law. And be it further ordered that if this order is not complied with, the city manager hereby authorized and directed to ask for bids for the abatement of said, of the said nuisance. And be it further ordered that if this order is not timely complied with and no timely appeal is taken, the city manager may undertake the ordered corrective action at municipal expense and cover all expenses including reasonable attorney fees by means of a special tax or, or civil action. This decision may be appealed to Superior Court, Superior Court pursuant to main rule of civil procedure ADB. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle. Is there a second by Count Deputy Mayor Hurley? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yeah.
And I am also a yes. So that is unanimous of all those present. And that concludes that work for the evening. And now we are on to, I think, Counselor comments.
Yeah, we are.
Counselor Martell?
Uh, I just want to thank everyone for a good meeting tonight and, um, for some helpful explanations.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. I just wanted to share, if anybody hasn't seen it, that there is an effort for a citywide yard sale coming up on June fifth and six, uh, kind of put together by one of our local citizens. It's, it's kind of a cool concept. You can find out more info by searching for on Facebook under Sanford Springvale Citywide Yard Sale or under Eventbrite. So I just wanted to put in a plug for that.
Thank you. Counselor Tuttle?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to wish my lovely wife Anne happy birthday. Peter Dunham at Gary's Market said that she could turn me in for two thirty-five-year-old. But, uh, I also have something on the new business. Madam Mayor, would you like me to do that now or wait?
You mean for agenda items, you mean? Just wait.
Agenda items, yes.
You can wait, okay? Um, Counselor Stackpole, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I have, uh, two things, uh, this evening. First of all, uh, regarding, uh, solid waste. Uh, once again, I've been walking around my, uh, my neighborhood, uh, I'll say this without picking on anybody. Uh, many people in the neighborhood, uh, down here have, uh, fire pits, you know? For the summertime, they set out and they have a nice fire in their backyard. No problem at all with that. But I've noticed that they have these, some people have these fire pits filled with cardboard boxes. And, uh, I would like to encourage everybody to please recycle your cardboard boxes and your, and your paper, uh, because those are actually some of the more valuable recyclables, uh, that we have. Of course, the city does make a little money off these, uh, these recyclables. And if you burn them up, then not doing, uh, anybody any favors, so to speak. Uh, if you recycle them, then we get, uh, a little money back on. So please recycle your cardboard boxes. Also, remember you can recycle your pizza boxes, uh, that food contamination with pizza boxes is not, uh, a significant issue. Clearly, you don't want to leave half the pizza in there, but if there's a little pepperoni and cheese in there, uh, they don't mind because the cardboard is that valuable. Also, paper, newspapers, uh, other, so please, uh, recycle those things. Uh, the second thing is to please get your shot. If you haven't done so, please get your shot. Uh, I've got both of my shots. My wife has both of her shots. My son and his pregnant wife down in Philadelphia have had their shots. My daughter in Massachusetts is having her second shot this weekend. My stepdaughter, her husband and the three grandchildren, uh, are in the process of all getting their shots. Uh, one is actually twelve years old, so he's going to get his shot. If you're hesitant, please go out, talk to a trusted friend, get the facts. And then, um, if you're against having a shot, please reconsider, uh, getting your shot. They do work. Uh, it is my wife's birthday this Friday, and we are going to go out to dinner in town, uh, of course, with appropriate social distancing and masking and unmasking to eat, but we're going to go out. So it works. Um, I can now walk down by the pond with my dog without a mask on outside. So, uh, it is working. Please get it done. Uh, it's much appreciated by everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Uh, Deputy Mayor Hurley, did you have anything this evening?
No, I'm fine.
And I am also fine. Um, agenda items. Counselor Martell, did you have any future agenda items you wanted to discuss?
Uh, nothing new. Thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes, uh, and I'm not sure honestly if it's an agenda item or an offer to put something together, but there's a lot of conversation on social media regarding our, you know, spring potholes, of course, and, and what's happening with roads. And I would really love, uh, to have a one pager or a link, um, under DPW, something that allows us to share. Here's what the current, you know, derivation of the, the road improvement plan and repair plan is with, with, of course, a big disclaimer that's subject to change, um, you know, based on all kinds of factors. But it'd be nice to have something we could all share, uh, easily. And I am willing to make that item and bring it forward to property subcommittee or elsewhere for review and approval. But, um, I would need information from DPW to make that happen. So I'm volunteering to create something and bring it forward, but I do think it's gonna be something to put together.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hanselman. I think we can make sure that that's on the agenda next week. Um, Counselor Tuttle, you said you had something? Hello?
You're muted.
Oh, okay. It's stirring my life, Anne. But the city manager and I, I attended a airport advisory committee today. And I think it may be time to talk about making, uh, the committee a full council subcommittee. Uh, some of the issues, uh, I think that need to be addressed for, uh, airport to go forward. So I'm hoping that we could discuss that, Madam Mayor.
Emery? She might have gotten kicked off. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear it.
Okay, she might have gotten kicked off. Okay, thank you for that, um, Counselor Tuttle. I, I heard about that meeting a little bit today as well, so.
You see what happens?
We'll bring that forward.
My talk, Maura?
We'll bring that forward to one of, I'll tell them to bring that forward to one of the subcommittees for a discussion. Um, who we are now? Bob Stackpole, Counselor Stackpole?
No, uh, no, uh, 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 agenda, uh, agenda items, thank you.
No agenda items. And I have nothing. I, I'm not sure Counselor, uh, Mayor Mistracchio would have anything as well. Anything for you to see for future agenda items that you picked up from this evening?
No, I have just those two. We'll move those forward to subcommittee.
Yeah, I suspect some more agenda items will come up out of this evening's discussion, but, uh, we'll let the mayor talk to the city manager about that. So if there's nothing else, I will declare the agenda, the, uh, meeting adjourned.
Madam Mayor, I just had Deputy Mayor, I know that Representative Stackpole mentioned about old pizza. I've got some in my, my room here. That's what I'm about to eat at, but I will save the box.
Yeah, bring the boxes home, recycle them.
There you go. You can have pizza as long as you recycle. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Keep an eye on the subcommittee agendas for next week. They'll be out on Friday. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.